Okay, ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to call the Board of Selectmen Meeting into order for Tuesday, July 16, 2019. Before we get started, would you please rise and salute the flag with me?
I salute the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands.
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, just first order of business, Mr. Mark Kratman will not be able to make it tonight, and Ms. Stronach is running a little bit late, but we're going to get started because we have a packed agenda. So, let's jump right into scheduled items. So, the first item for 6 o'clock is a new liquor application, 1175 Andover Service, Inc. And before we get started, do I have a motion to read the public hearing, to waive the public hearing?
I'll make a motion to waive, to read the notice.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Before we get started, just naming, and just names for the record, please, and then you can state your case of business.
Sure. Good evening, Attorney Trish Fonsworth with Lawson &amp; White's in Boston, behalf of the applicant. With me is Gary Siano, well, I'll start. Gary Siano, who's with Sawyer Realty, the owners of the property, and Peter Kudis, who's the manager, and proposed manager on this license.
And maybe just get into it, kind of the state of your business, what you maintain, just for the public, we have a lot of folks that watch it on TV, and kind of state the business and what you're asking for on behalf of the board?
Sure, but we're here asking for a CB all alcohol license for the Marriott Hotel, and Peter can describe more, you know, the business, but there was a license there previously, and so now there's a new owner of the hotel. It's still under the Marriott banner, but what we would like is to be able to serve alcohol out of two areas in the hotel, and there is a floor plan provided, and we actually even have some pictures here as well, that you can pass these around.
I'd like to.
Thanks. This hotel is, you know, every unit, every hotel room, there's no mini bars, but this is, you know, they're like little kitchenettes, so people can bring food, snacks, but they can go downstairs, we would hope, with your permission, be able to purchase alcohol, either drink it downstairs in those areas, or bring it back to their rooms. And Peter's tip certified, he'll make sure everyone that sells alcohol is tip certified, so there won't be any issues with that. But Peter is kind of as well taught, he's been there four years.
Yeah, I think as you all know, it is the residence in Tuxbury, on Andover Street, been there for 30 years, had a liquor license majority of the time that we've been there. Obviously, with change of ownership, you know, sometimes that kind of falls through the cracks, and that's what happened this time. So, we're looking at it, we're looking to be able to have the ability to sell it at our front desk as, in essence, a market, and have people either, you know, drink it there in the lobby, or take it back to their guest room. As you know, the hotel is set up a little uniquely, it's not one tower, it's 11 buildings, it's nine acres, and it's kind of spread out a little bit. But again, you know, we do have an history going back with the town of Tuxbury and whatnot, and, you know, we've been able to handle a license in the past, and we look forward to having it. You know, in the state, as you guys know, the mobile station right next door to us doesn't carry it, you know, so when people kind of get to the hotel, you know, looking for, you know, a single cocktail before they go to their room or whatnot, and that's really, for the most part, how it will be sold. You'll buy it at the front desk, from the desk clerk, who'll be tip certified also, and they'll take it back to their guest room.
Okay, very good. If there's nothing else we'd like to do at this point, is open it up to the board for, so what I'm going to do is open up to the board for discussion, I'll see if anyone hears for a public hearing, we'll close the public hearing, and we'll have our final discussion. So, at this time, Mr. Brian Dick, any questions?
A couple of questions, I read through the application, I saw the experience and thought it was good, I was confused on why, all of a sudden you needed, because I didn't know you had one, so you do have one now, and it's a full liquor license?
No.
You don't have one now?
Well, we don't have one right now. The hotel's been sold twice in a four-year period, and it's, it just kind of lapsed in the middle there, I realized that it had lapsed, and I surrendered it.
Gotcha.
And then I kind of went through the process last year, and we sold again, you know, so, you know, just the manager trying to kind of make things happen there, and the hotel just kept getting sold.
So, it's available, so now you're getting your available license?
Yes.
And will there be a refurbishment of the lobby, or, you said you were selling alcohol at the front desk, so I didn't, how does that?
Yeah, the way it actually kind of works is that you have the front desk, and then behind you, you have like kind of an open window, and you can kind of see into our market. We kind of market it, we put the beer and wine kind of at the top of it, so actually just kind of check in, you kind of can see it, and hopefully that entices you to have an alcohol.
So, it's, it's a full license, so it's beer, wine, and liquor, correct?
Correct, and again, I kind of move myself into that, that won't be predominantly where I dabble, but, you know, it's still, to have the ability to sell, you know, a Scotch or vodka would be great.
And so, will there be two areas where you'll be selling that, so the front desk, and then?
One.
Just that one?
Just the one, I mean, that would be my plan, that doesn't mean I wouldn't move it occasionally into the lobby, and, you know, and then have somebody kind of take cash, but 99% of the time, it would be right out of the market.
Okay, and then, I guess the last question I had was, I know sometimes beer and wine and liquor can come into your, you know what I mean, and you don't, how do you control that in the lobby versus what you're selling?
Yeah, it's, I mean, we currently, I mean, none of it gets in now, I mean, it's, it doesn't get into our pool area, you know, unless for some reason you pour it into another type of cup or whatever, which, you know, a lot of people are familiar with. But, you know, we have everything posted, you don't bring it in, you know, per health department, just don't do it.
Yep, so you guys control that now?
Right, and we're trying to make ours unique enough, too, that like, it's not like I'm just going to sell Bud and Bud Light, you know, I'm going to sell different brands that identify with us, and so we'll know when other people bring their stuff in.
Okay, and tip certified and all that stuff?
Yeah, I am already, you know, so, and I've held liquor license in New Hampshire, for example.
Yeah, I saw the experience, so I appreciate that, those are all the questions I have.
Ms. Jane Miller?
Hi, thank you so much for coming, I had many of the same questions, my only other question was, do you require that people check in, or they show you their hotel key before they purchase from you versus selling to the general public?
Yeah, well, I mean, obviously, we go by all the rules of, you know, serving alcohol, you know, carding people and whatnot, when you actually check into the hotel, we take your license. Days have kind of changed a lot, between, we ask for a license right off the bat and your credit card. We don't take cash, as you kind of know, some of our neighbors, Motel 6, for example, has had really struggles with taking cash and whatnot, with the type of folks that, you know, kind of check in, you know, paying cash, it's really hard, so we don't take cash as a rule, but we take license and credit card from everybody, so we know who's staying with us.
So, you're not selling to the general public, or do you plan to?
No, I don't, I don't plan to, I just, I can't, in the way we're located, I really can't picture it.
The goal is really, is an amenity to our guests, the person comes in, 6, 5 o'clock, 6 o'clock, I put on their set, just once.
9 o'clock, I totally get it, yeah. Okay, that's all I have, thank you.
Okay, very good, oh, Mr. Brian Dick, you have another question?
No, I just, I was looking at the application, and I was just pointing out from our town council that there was a couple of things that were corrected on the application, right? Mr. Montori, so the corporate vote date, and the sign by the clerk, those were corrected, and so everything seems in line.
Okay, okay, and, perfect, I just have a few questions, Peter, thanks, obviously, the application's very extensive and everything checked out, as far as, I don't think it's a very reasonable request, you know, being a hotel, what about locking, you know, so obviously you're going to have to obey by the, by the hours of operation, if you would? So, any thought on, you know, I just envisioned a cabinet, you know, of alcohol, so how would you, you know, lock that, so a guest doesn't come down at 3:00 in the morning and says, "Hey, you know, I want a Bud Light"?
It's a great question, the best part is that it is right there at the desk, the desk is banned 24 hours a day, but that being said, I mean, you know, if a fire alarm goes off or something else, every time you go to sell, you physically have a key on you, you have to unlock it, so it'll never, and that's the only thing that'll be in that one cooler, will be the beer and wine and other spirits, so you'd have to open it every time.
Okay.
Kind of inconvenient, it's not the easiest thing in the world, but it's the only way to really stop, you know, somebody from sneaking in and grabbing something.
Oh, that's excellent, exactly, because I know, obviously, all hotels are 24 hours a day, that's really all I had, outside of always, you know, using the stern message, I don't know if you're the history of Tuxbury, but in the last couple of years, we've had some history of selling to minors, so I cannot stress that enough, where ID, ID, and I use my same line, just like at Fenway Park, "Cut everyone", and that way you stay safe, and, because we had a real problem with selling to minors, and I don't want that, you know, as the steward of that license, you have to follow the rules, so don't, you know, we're very, going to be very strict on this board, because we've had some situations in the past, so I always have to kind of send that missile across the bow.
Thank you.
Okay, I have no other questions, so at this point, what I'd like to do is open up for any public comments, seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
So, at this time, what is the pleasure of the, if there's no further questions, what's the pleasure of the board?
The only question I had, a question for the town manager, through you, Mr. Chairman, where does this stand in terms of how our liquor license allotments run?
So, after this one is, if this one's approved tonight, we will have one all-alcoholic liquor license left.
Thank you.
And we're going to, that's a good question, Ms. Miller, we're actually going to talk about, under new business, because the town did vote a town meeting to add additional licenses, and Mr. Montori's going to cover that under new business, so to your point, we have two right now, open, so we'll have one in pocket, so to speak, if we actually do approve this request, that's all, but very good, good, good call out.
Thank you.
Ms. Stronach?
Welcome. Thank you.
So, we just?
Sorry, 195 Zoo.
We know, in 38, it's a mess as well, but we just, we just talked about the new liquor application for 175, so, so at this point, we're going to open up, what's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the new liquor application for 11775 Andover Service, Inc.
Second.
I have a motion, a second, any discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Thank you, thank you very much, and congratulations, thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Good luck. So, Mr. Montori, we do have, we have a couple minutes before 6:15, so I don't know if, you know, maybe it's timely to talk about, I don't know if we want to jump to the new business, just talk about the home rules petition, additional liquor license, draft legislation?
Sure, we can do that. So, the home rule petition was submitted to our delegation to increase the number of liquor licenses in the town, at the time we were submitting it, we had one license available, and we had at least two, maybe three people who are interested in liquor licenses for restaurants, so we submitted the article to town meeting to increase the amount of licenses to six, to an additional six above our quota, we sent the information into our delegation, they filed legislation, and then when it went to committee, the chairman of the committee had concerns with the home rule petition, and there were concerns that the chairman, as well as the committee, has had in the past when other communities submitted similar home rule petitions. I had given the board a draft piece of legislation that we thought was the final document, that is not the case. I actually spoke to the chairman of the committee this past Friday, he has concerns even with the most recent draft, and we decided to pull the legislation for the moment, and I am going to go into the State House and meet with him, and have a discussion with him on what he's looking for in the legislation, and essentially, what they're looking for is, they want to tie liquor licenses that community, the new liquor licenses for communities above their quota to economic development, or to very specific areas, they just don't want to give, here's an additional five, here's an additional six, to utilize any way a community wants, because they find out that some communities, communities either don't need them or never use them, they want to, so, and they just don't want, they're valuable, so they don't want that to happen. So, he wants to talk about what areas of town can we specifically target, he wants to know if there are any specific addresses that are looking for the liquor license that we, licenses that we can target, and the legislation that's passed in the most recent past has had a sunset clause on the licenses, so no matter what is decided, we'll have one, two, three years to utilize the license, or they go away. So, what I asked him to think about was maybe staggering the licenses when we get them, so maybe we get two the first year, and have two years to use them, two the second year, and have another two years to use them, two the third year, and another year, two years to use them, so he said he was definitely open to that, and he would be very creative with us as long as it meets, you know, what they're trying to achieve as a committee. So, I'm not asking the board to approve anything tonight, I plan to, again, through Senator Feingold and the delegation, have a meeting set up with the chairman, go into, meet with them, with our zoning map, show them our zone, show them the area of town we're looking at, and then come up with something on levers that makes sense for them and for us, and that's it.
Any comments, questions from the board?
Just typically, sometimes this type of legislation, especially home rule petitions, take a little bit of time, so, although we're still going, working with the delegation on getting this, what do you think the timeline would be, it would not be immediate, correct?
If we can come up with some agreeable language in August, and then I get back to the Board of Selectmen to approve it, I think we could see something by the end of the calendar year.
End of calendar year, thank you.
And my only comments would be, you know, and I'm sure we'll work through the letter, the draft, as a collective board, Mr. Montori, but highlighting the new businesses that have come in, and, you know, I'm going to say it, even with the Route 38, over the next two to four years being developed, making some of these abandoned privately-owned entities, AKA strip malls, there's a high potential for business to roll in town, like I said, in the next two to four years, as we continue to make improvements to 38, so I think that's a big selling point, that we can draft up as business justifications.
Sure, and in addition to the six all-alcoholic licenses, we did add two beer and wine licenses in there, too, so, maybe we asked for too much, I'm not sure, but we, we did.
Negotiate.
Yeah.
Absolutely, okay, thank you very much, so thank you for highlighting that, if there's no further questions, I think we've reached our time, perfect, so our next scheduled item is the National Grid Poll Petition for Whipple Road.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to waive the notice of public hearing, the reading?
Second.
I have a motion, a second, all's in favor? Aye. All right, maybe just, we'll start off, we know the drill, just name and business reason for coming in front of the board.
Okay, David Lucet, Senior Designer at National Grid, 1101 Turnpike Street in North Andover, here tonight for the town to ask for two poll locations, as shown on the diagram. There's a new 911 center going in on Whipple Road, currently, we only have one phase that goes down the road, and a couple of sections there, between poles, it's over 200 feet, which is really long anyways for a single phase, but we're going to be bringing in two more phases so they can get three-phase electricity, and what we'd like to do is place the two poles shown between the poles, and it would cut the distances down, and allow us to get the wires safely higher up in the air, and properly service the new 911 center. It's part of a large project that's going to be going on in the general area, but those are the only two poles in this particular job that we need new locations for, so, if the town sees fit, will enable us to go forward, I'm not sure what the timeline is for this, but that will be one last thing that we need to have before we get ready to go to start it for the customer.
Okay, very good.
And we're the customer.
I was going to say, we'll get to that, we're actually the customer, so that's even better, but, so at this point, let's open up to the board, and then we'll see if there's any butters that have any concerns, and then we'll close that out, and we're back to the board. So, questions, concerns from the board? Ms. Miller?
I assume that none of the, that neither of these two new poles will occlude the visibility coming out of the DPW, or emergency vehicles accessing them.
No, they'll be, what we normally do is keep them off the road far enough that when a car, when you're pulling up out of a driveway or whatnot, you should be able to see around it down the road.
The driveway's not on the map, so I can't, I can't tell where it is.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, all right, thank you.
Very good, any other questions? Okay, what I do, I have, again, we're the customer, Tuxbury, because we're building it, so obviously, you know, it's, it's an absolute business requirement here, but there were a good many number of butters, so I don't have any further questions, so if there's no questions from the board, at this time, I'd like to open up, since it's a public hearing, to any butters, questions, comments, concerns. Okay, seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so at this point, what is the pleasure of the board?
Make a motion, Mr. Chair, to approve the National Grid Poll Petition 2809-2110 on Whipple Road.
Second.
I have a motion, a second, all's in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All righty, moving along, 6:20, perfect, 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 so now we're going to move to election staff appointments, and I believe we have Ms. Denise. And then we're going to sub, then we're going to segue right to goals and objectives, and you'll be first.
Yes, so, I submitted a list of prospective election staff for your review and hopeful approval, so these election staff members would be appointed through next year, so it's an annual appointment in July.
Okay, thank you very much, questions from the board?
I have no questions, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Stronach?
I have no questions, but I do want to thank you for putting the disclosures in with these, it made it very, very helpful, so I appreciate that.
You're welcome, I think that's important.
Yep.
Okay, I'm just going to say, the only comments I have is I just want to thank the folks as usual, so, good many number of folks, seems like we always have folks that want to help out, you know, and make it a successful day, and there's a good many number of folks that, like I said, do it year in, year out, so I thank you, and thank them for their service, so, at this time, what's the pleasure of the board?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the election staff appointments as presented by our town clerk.
A motion, do I have a second? Second by Ms. Stronach, all's in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous, thank you very much. See that, perfect timing, Denise, it's almost that time, so we have a couple minutes, I don't know if we want to take, why don't we just bounce to meeting minutes, because we do have a full agenda, so why don't we turn it over to the clerk for meeting minutes to be approved?
Okay, I'll do that, yeah, all right, I make a motion to approve the minutes from executive session of March 12, 2019.
Motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Ms. Stronach, all's in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous, that was easy.
I make a motion to approve the regular session minutes of the Board of Selectmen meeting from July, excuse me, June 24, 2019.
Very good, I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll make a second.
Ms. Stronach, all's in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous.
I do want it noted for the record that I was not in attendance for this meeting.
Okay, but with the new rules, you can always just read them like you did and approve exactly, we used to have that stain, but that's very good.
I just want it noted.
Okay, very good.
Do people know that?
The June 24 meeting?
The June 24th.
You, you came?
Not at the?
Yeah, you came, 6:24.
Right, but I'm just saying, I, yes, I see that, thank you.
Okay, all right, very good, that order of business is done, so we're going to turn back to Ms. Denise Graffio, and, I think, are we going to have a PowerPoint, okay, very good, that's why I'm sitting over here, so why don't we jump into goals, goals and objectives, and Denise, you can get things kicked off.
Oh, okay, it said 2018 on the cover, so I wanted to make sure.
No, you're in the right place.
I'd like to start off by saying thank you, not only for the opportunity each year to present to you my goals and objectives, but also for providing the support necessary to accomplish them. When thinking about establishing my fiscal year 20 goals, I looked back at previous year's goals to determine what we've accomplished, as well as those left unmet. I'm happy to report that with your support, the support of our town manager, other department heads, and of course, my very awesome team, we have certainly accomplished a lot over the years. That being said, there is still much to do. Goal one is to continue to administer our Town of Tuxbury Document Management Plan. My first order of business is to work with Technology Manager Jamie Bent to upgrade our Laserfish document management platform. This upgrade will enable us to, online accessibility to digitized documents. We have made great strides in the number and amount of documents that we have digitized, and each year, in accordance with our document management plan, I prioritize digitization of at least one series of documents, and incorporate the digitized archives into Laserfish. In years past, we've digitized vital records, such as birth, marriage, and death certificates, annual town reports, appointment slips, and Board of Selectmen meeting minutes. Board of Selectmen meeting minutes are not all up online yet, and this Laserfish upgrade will allow us to put those up online for public accessibility. They are accessible to search for town employees, but it would be optimal to have the public be able to search those as well. This year, my goal is to digitize archived planning board variances and special permits. Those are inbound books, so it's a little bit more of a costly project, and based on the amount of requests, that kind of is falling back a little bit into the priority list, but that would be a category of record that we do get requests for, searching, and having them digitized would make that a lot easier. My second goal relates to elections, more specifically, early voting central tabulation facility improvements. In Massachusetts, the early voting law was first implemented during the presidential election in 2016, and requires early voting to be implemented during biennial state elections. A proposal to expand early voting to the state's presidential primaries is currently being considered by state lawmakers, and all signs indicate that there will be further expansion of early voting in the Commonwealth. Current regulations specify two methods of tabulating early voted ballots. One method involves sending the early voted ballots to the precincts on election day, to be processed by the precinct wardens, into the same tabulator that is being utilized for election day ballots. In Tuxbury, we implemented this method during the November 16 presidential and state election, which was the first opportunity for early voting. As you can imagine, with over 7,000 early ballots voted, this was a time-consuming process, and during an election with close to 80% turnout, presented significant logistical challenge, challenges for the precinct wardens and their teams, which is the reason I decided to implement the second method for the November 2018 state election, a central tabulation facility. A central tabulation facility is a designated location, separate from the polling locations, where election staff process early voted ballots. I hired three additional staff members, and one additional spare tabulator to process the early voted ballots, keeping costs in mind, thinking that that was a good idea. Well, it was great, the method was more efficient, and it removed the responsibility from the precinct wardens, who were all thrilled, and thought that the election ran very smoothly, but the election results did take longer, the process did take longer than I expected, and I announced results a little later than I would have liked, some of you may have heard that, or been involved in that. So, in preparation for future early voting cycles and expansion of early voting, it's my goal to either purchase or lease additional tabulators, as well as hire and train additional staff, specifically for the central tabulation facility. I've also been in communication with our Senator, State Senator Barry Feingold, who happens to be the chairperson of the Joint Committee on Election Laws. I shared information gathered via a survey of all Massachusetts city and town clerks after the November 8, 2016 election, the clerks that are responsible for implementing the early voting in the elections, put together a very comprehensive survey, I was able to share that with Senator Feingold, and we look forward to working with him to not only expand early voting, but as well as hopefully create legislation which provides for an efficient and cost-effective process in the Commonwealth. My third goal is kind of a rego, is to maintain a highly qualified staff that works to provide services to serve and protect the residents, visitors, and businesses of this community, with a primary objective to increase efficiencies and manage costs. A few months ago, I completed the Supervisory Leadership Development Program, sponsored by the Massachusetts Municipal Association, which inspired me to reestablish this goal, which I believe reflects the mission of the Town Clerk's Office. which inspired me to reestablish this goal, which I believe reflects the mission of the Town Clerk's Office. We like to think of our office as the virtual front door of the Town of Tewksbury. It's the place where new residents get their first taste of the connections and services the town has to offer. We realize the importance of always welcoming newcomers, as well as lifelong residents with information, resources, and a smile. We strive to perform at a high level and recognize that we must continuously work to earn the respect of our community. The Town Clerk's Office makes every effort to consistently meet and manage the public's demand for information, and serve the residents of the town and other key stakeholders. We believe this to be a testament to our continued efforts in seeking to maximize efficiency for the use of technology, professional training, and pride in our community. At this point, I welcome any feedback or any questions you may have.
Very good, good job. At this time, I'd like to open up to the board. Questions from Ms. Graffio? Ms. Jane Miller, I'll pick on you first.
Okay, this is awesome. I've worked with you for years. Thank you very much. Thank you for your detail in your narrative, particularly about the early voting. There's a lot, it's absolutely a moving target right now, and I remember you guys tabulating, and tabulating, yeah, so many, so many ballots, which is great, we always want high turnout, but my question that I had was, I wonder with this big election coming up and a massive Democratic potentially ballot for the primary in the spring, if that's gonna be a concern for you with the number of, with the equipment that we have? We need to make an investment there?
Yes.
So it was something I'm interested in following. All of this is fantastic, and also you're doing the Suffolk program. That's, that's a big deal, it's a great program, so I didn't know you were doing that, it's really cool. Thank you very much, and your staff for all that you're doing.
Thank you.
Mr. Brian Dick?
Wow, everything's great, love your emails, that you harass the political office, no, just kidding.
Gently remind.
I have to say, though, very, very right on point, you're very attentive to those details, and I appreciate that. Making sure that everybody's up to speed on what they need to do each year, serving the town, right? Awesome. I know the clerk sounds very accessible, you're doing a great job, as usual. I guess the, how do, if you could walk me through real quick, not a huge thing, but like, when, when the elections close, how does that, how do you, how does that behind the scenes work? Do you, do you get, like, I know there was, there was a little bit delay, I guess, right? Is that the, what you're talking about, the early voting?
Yeah.
Tabulation, was that the, the delay, that, that piece of it?
That was the delay, yeah, so I underestimated...
How does it work? What happens behind the curtain?
So I underestimated the time it was going to take for the new tabulators to process each individual ballot. So they ta, it takes an image of the ballot, it takes a little bit longer. You may have noticed when you voted that it takes a few seconds longer to process your ballot. It also tells you if there is an error on your ballot, maybe you overvoted, you undervoted, you didn't mark the oval in the way that the tabulator reads it. And gives the voter the opportunity to get a new ballot, review the ballot, make any changes if they decide to. In a central tabulation facility, all of those ballots are in envelopes. So the process causes us to read the name and the address of the voter in the envelope, turn the envelope over, open it, and then feed it through the machine. So I had three staff members working on that process, and obviously it has to be open to the public, it's part of the election itself, so that has to all be open to the public. If a ballot is marked in a wrong way, and it gets sent out, and the voter is not there, which they're not, because it was in a ballot, those have to be hand-counted. So that, that took a little time, which, my, I think my comment that night was, good things come to those who wait. So the integrity of the election results are there, it just took a little bit longer. So my, my goal is to have at least two more machines. With the presidential election coming up next November, that won't go to waste. We were looking at the cost for a whole bundle, meaning the machine and the ballot box, is a little over 6,000, so I was, I was working with town manager to try to figure out a way to fund that.
We own those, we don't lease them, right? We don't, we own those machines?
We do, yeah. And then, so each precinct, we have four polling locations with two precincts each, so eight precincts. So the regular election day results get printed out from those, from those tabulators. And then a member of my staff goes and picks up the tabulator along with the machine, they bring that back to my office, and we enter all of the results into, you know, a spreadsheet to be able to give that. There are also some write-ins that need to be processed at the polls, and those results get sent back as well. They have to be tabulated at the polls and sent back to my office, too.
I was just curious.
That's why it's always, it's unofficial results that we give that night. And so there's some ballots that are in there that weren't counted, that get entered in by the next day.
And that's how every, that's how Wilmington works, the same way, right?
Yes. Yes.
And they do those...
Right, so I was scratching my head a little bit, I know that Andover, I did talk to the other clerks before, before this, and I mean, these same challenges are being presented to everybody, which I think it's important to get that to the legislation that are actually making the laws to hopefully try to streamline the counting process. It would be awesome if we could eliminate the whole envelope thing in some way, and possibly even count the ballots during the early voting process. I think that would be...
Doing it before the election day?
Right.
Get those tabulations.
You go to early vote, you put your, yeah, your ballot right into the machine.
Just, so those, those envelopes were counted after 8 o'clock type of thing? When things closed, that's when you start counting those absentees? No?
No, they, they're all counted throughout the day. The absentees get counted throughout the day at the polls, and the center, the early voting ballots, the first election were through the day, were through the day, and it was logistical...
Yeah, gotcha, okay, yeah.
Central tabulation throughout the day, they're opening the envelopes. And it, they are concerns to the voter, because the voter, we, has expressed concerns that, well, I, it's a secret ballot, now you, you're seeing my ballot, you're seeing my name, and the law requires the envelopes. We don't look at them when we're processing, we're just going as fast as we can, not paying any attention to, you know, after we read them, whose, whose name is on the ballot, on the envelope.
So yeah, no complaint, just was understanding the whole process, we touched on it a little bit, so you clarified that for me. Very good, robust goals, I love, love your explanation on all of them, and continuing, great stuff.
Thank you.
Looking forward to it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Chair.
Very good. Ms. Stronach.
I love that you call your office the front door of Tewksbury. I love that statement, and I know that you've used that before, but every year when you come and say that, it just warms my heart. And I do think that your staff and yourself are very customer service oriented, which I think is really important in that department. Your goals, as typical of your work, is exemplary, and I have two questions for you. With the document management, I know that we're taking a piece. Do you do that based on a certain number in your budget that you're using every year? So what is that number?
So I have a revolving fund for record preservation. So $5 of every birth, marriage, and death certificate that we sell goes into the revolving fund to be used for record preservation, record preservation-type activities. So we do use those funds for that. We also have some Community Preservation Act funds still available, that when we were renovating the town hall, we, we used a pretty good chunk of that. I ju, I still have some available, which I'm hoping to use for that LaserFiche upgrade. I think we might need a new server, an additional server for that, so it's gonna be a little bit costly. So I do have that Community Preservation Act fund available for that purpose.
Great, and I do think that the planning board and the special permits would be very helpful for people to go back, probably more helpful than getting the access to the BOS meetings to the public. But I just appreciate that work there, because I do think that it's readily available to people, especially the births and all that.
One of the great things is the annual town reports that we have online, and the archived ones. We, I sort of use those for searches on a regular basis, and those are available to the public for any searches.
Great, and then, just to piggyback on the early voting, I think everybody loves the early voting, and it certainly increases our voting percentage, so that's always a good thing. I just, you're talking 6,000 per machine, correct?
Yes, that includes the tabulator, as well as the ballot box that it goes into.
In the first year that we did early voting, the state gave us some funding, but that evaporated after that first time, correct?
Yeah, so the state does give us some funding, they did for both, they did for both early voting times that we early voted. And it was directly related to a Saturday, a weekend voting. So if we held early voting on a Saturday, they gave us a certain amount of money. So they did reimburse us for that. The money is set aside to be used for staffing. And so where this central tabulation facility is optional, it's not considered a mandate, an unfunded mandate. So we don't get reimbursed for costs associated with the central tabulation facility at this time.
Okay, thank you so much.
Alright, very good, short and sweet. I just want to say, first and foremost, I'm so happy, Denise, that you didn't say our early elections were delayed because of external entities, so for that, I thank you. So that was big. I mean, hey, listen, we got a ton of calls, because it was kind of great to see the, the enthusiasm for the election, and everyone wanting to see the results, and pingin', you know, everyone texting and calling. So I think it was a little bit delayed, you took a lessons learned, you're gonna make it better. So what's, what's better than that? So I think that's cool. And to Ms. Stronach's point, it's only gonna get bigger and bigger and bigger for convenience. So I thank you for that. My other point is light and speed, Mr. Montori and your staff. Whenever we send an email, it's before we hit the send button, it's almost like we're getting a reply, so it's just incredible how you and your staff and yourself, and frankly, set all the department heads, they come back with lightning speed with us, and that only helps the residents, so I want to thank you for that. And last but not least, I always say, you and your staff make it look easy. And now, to Mr. Brian Dick's point, kind of behind the scenes, it's not easy. Even during Election Day, you guys stay calm and cool, and there's so much going on, but that's a credit to you and staff, and I know you always give your staff credit. So on those points, I just want to thank you, and I have no other questions. So if the board is good, I can't thank you enough.
Thank you.
Great job, thank you.
Thank you very much, thanks.
Awesome. Okay, keeping right along, I believe our next presenter? Chief, come on down.
Good evening. Thank you very much for having me for the Goals and Objectives for Fire Department for the upcoming year. For the, for the Fire Department for the upcoming year, there are many goals that we're continuing to work on, and narrowing it down to these three. Local Comprehensive Emergency Management Plan, the revision of that. The implementation of a policy and training platform is something new that we are moving into right now, and we've started that process. And then the Regional Dispatch Center and the fire, Senate Fire Station continuing those, those projects. So these goals here are new goals. As far as the local Comprehensive Emergency Management Plan, we're constantly looking at it and updating the information that we have for our target hazards here in the community, and that spreads between multiple town departments, not just the Fire Department, involves the Board of Health, the Police Department, the Fire Department, Billy Department, as well as the, obviously, Board of Selectmen and the Town Manager. So moving forward with that, and updating, going to the new platform or the new format that the state is going to, we've reached out to the, the state and our local region here in Tewksbury, and they've offered some assistance in putting together and working with our plan to format it and consolidate it, and put it into a, a format that is usable community-wide and from the state level down, should an event happen, that we will easily merge into the state system and even the federal system for responses. So the, the plan is to update that, provide a draft copy of the, of the plan to all the departments and all the stakeholders here in town, receive their input, make the changes as needed, and then move forward with that to disseminate the plans to the stake, disseminate the plan to the stakeholders, and then push that down to all of our management teams and employees in each department, because from the bottom up and then the top down, there were roles and responsibilities that we all have. So making sure that everybody's included in that is extremely important. As far as the policy, the second goal of implementing a policy and training platform, we signed a contract with a nationally known and recognized company called LexiPoll. And they basically provide master policy and content for standardized federal, state, and best practices. And then they also do a, a review of your local policies to make sure that you're not in conflict with any of the best practices, the state or the federal laws, or regional type of best practices. With us going into a regional dispatch center, with the Town of Drakken right now, Drakken is doing the same thing that we are. So basically, this is a step toward the regionalization process for the, for the dispatching, and it's gonna make it so that our fire crews are standardized in how we operate, and that's gonna be beneficial to the dispatchers that have to dispatch, and the Fire Department's just getting on the best practices platform. There are several other communities, local communities, that are also going to this platform. And I think the driving force for this, this is an annual subscription or service that's provided by LexiPoll, and the one thing that it comes with is that it's actionable for both the town, the employer, and the employee. So we are going to have a system where the employee, if something is not going as designed, the employee has action that they can take based on the policies and procedures that are all, that are all vetted by attorneys, both locally and at a national level. And this is state-specific here, so that the, the state policies that we have, which, we looked at this, we've been looking at this for several years, and it didn't make real feasible sense until recently, I think we're, everybody's aware that we've become an OSHA state now, as far as the municipalities go. So this kind of pushed it over the edge for us. Now LexiPoll covers all the OSHA standards that affect the Fire Departments. They're really a police base that started off as a police-based service program, and they went into the fire side of things. So with this, we'll be able, able to integrate with our current training platform, their training platform. We're gonna update, review all of our current policies, and merge it into the LexiPoll system. And the biggest benefit to that is, somebody is always watching it. So as the court cases change, as laws change, as best practices change, that gets pushed down to the communities, and then it gets pushed down to, to the people who actually use the system, being our firefighters and fire officers. So it's gonna provide an access for all of our employees that will take into account the labor, labor agreements are consolidated into that, the state laws, the local policies that we have. And it's just not on the fire platform. It also has a lot of human resource interface, and I think there's a lot of exposure to communities now, not just from going out there and responding to calls, but internally with our employees, having employee issues between employees or between the employee and the town. So we have pretty good policies and procedures in the town that's, that's been kind of standardized. This will take it to that next step and, and have that constant oversight so that it's not put on a shelf and not going back and revised, not going back and being looked at and revised. So they also have daily and monthly training bulletins that they send out so that we can give those to our offices, and it's small things that kind of remind you and put things into perspective that you don't always think of, you know? Just simple things like a daily reminder, could be a simple, hey, don't forget, use your, use your head... your, uh, use your headlights. If your windshield wipers are on, your headlights are on. Doesn't seem like a big thing, but when you're pushing down that type of information, it just keeps things that are very relevant in, in the front, front burner for people as they're going through their thought processes of different types of calls and, and responses and whatnot from, from our perspective. So just a simple example of, uh, standardized, um, conveyance of information. Uh, moving on to the regional dispatch center and the center fire station, if anybody's been over by Whipple Road by the DPW, it, uh, we now have concrete and I think you're going to see walls going up very shortly. And, uh, it's, uh, on schedule, uh, on time for a turnover sometime February, March time for like timeframe. I think substantial completion is, uh, due in January sometime. Uh, and we are working actively. We had, uh, recent interviews with the, uh, operations board, which is made up of the, uh, Draken Fire, uh, Police and Fire Chiefs, uh, Draken, Tewksbury. And, uh, we've, uh, interviewed a number of candidates and we've narrowed it down to two people, um, that we're looking at right now. So once we bring that person on board, then, uh, a lot of the heavy lifting really begins besides the construction, it's getting, uh, a consolidated, uh, program together for a work, to putting together a workforce for the regional dispatch center. As far as the fire station goes, uh, we are moving.
Moving.
We're moving. Um, things, uh, things sometimes take longer than we think that they're going to take and, um...
Good things come that those that wait, we just heard.
Yes.
Good things come to those who wait.
Oh, okay.
Just, just on the fire station quickly, one of the things that's holding us up is, uh, we're working with Bank of America for, um, additional parking on their site, which will allow us not to have to build parking in the rear of our current lot, uh, and will save us some money. So we're just waiting for more at the Bank of America if they'll accommodate. If not, we'll move forward with our old plan. So we thought it was worth waiting, um, seeing a cost savings and going that route.
It, it's, it's not only a cost savings, but it's also a time saver too. And in the long-term usage of the lot, if we were able to, um, continue with the plan that we're, we're exploring right now, it would make it a lot more, um, user-friendly for both the, the community going to the station and for our members. The other thing that we'll do is it's probably going to reduce construction time also, uh, as well as reduce the cost. So it's definitely something worth waiting for. I am, if I had a nickel every time somebody asked me, where are you at with the fire station, uh, I would like to say it's, you know...
Yeah, I mean, I mean, the building, the building itself is, the design is moving forward, so that's not being delayed and they've, they've progressed pretty far on the design.
Yes. We're very close, so. Um, and outside of that, that's a synopsis of what the, the goals are for the, uh, for the year. These are, like I said, for the most part, um, continuation, but also, um, especially with the, the new, um, training platform and policy platform, that's something new that is going to take a few months to go over all the policies, merge our current policies and, uh, bring that to the members. So that's, that's going to be an ongoing process that's going to take a fair amount of, uh, time for, um, the management team at the fire department.
Mr. Chairman, before the board goes into questions, uh, under my report, I was going to give an update on the RECC. Since it's one of the goals, can I give it now and you can piggyback it all in?
Please, absolutely.
So just to refresh everyone's memory, we're, uh, moving forward with the Regional Emergency Communication Center, um, on a parcel of land, um, next to the DPW, uh, facility. Uh, it is a 6,500 square foot building. Uh, it's one-story and it's going to house the, um, Emergency Communications Center for both, um, Tewksbury and Drakken. Uh, the project's being funded by the State 911 Office. Uh, to date, we have been approved for, uh, grant funding totaling $4,751,005. Uh, that has, uh, that money is funding our project management, uh, of the, um, RECC in the amount of $258,000. It's funding the architecture and engineering at $357,000. Administration, which is being done by NIMCOG in the amount of $5,005. Uh, construction at the moment at $3,619,950. And they fund the first year of the executive director and we have that funded at $60,000. And so far, they've funded equipment at $451,750. So as you can see, the, the state has committed, um, a fair amount of funds already to the project. We have an FY20 grant in in the amount of two, a little over $2.9 million. Of that $2.9 million, $451,000 is for construction, the remaining construction costs and $2.4 million is for equipment. Uh, we anticipate hearing, uh, from State 911 over the next couple of weeks regarding that grant. Uh, I've spoken to the executive director on many occasions and what he has told myself, I believe he's told the public safety chiefs is, we're one of the top priorities in the Commonwealth for funding and for the project. So the project right now, uh, is moving along, uh, on schedule. Uh, we went out to bid and hired, uh, through the bidding process, Nelco Worldwide, um, who is the construction contractor. Uh, the contract, uh, is a little over $3.7 million, uh, for construction. Um, they, uh, currently have, uh, cleared the site, they've put in the foundation and , uh, this past, uh, last week, they poured the, uh, concrete slab, uh, for the building. Uh, the building should be complete, um, if we maintain the schedule, uh, around February in 2020. Um, we'll still have some grant funding we'll need to, uh, get further equipment, but the equipment that we're seeking right now will, will outfit the, the center itself, uh, and then we'll be, uh, transitioning for, uh, operation. Um, you know, the next big, uh, milestone, we're working on, uh, retention basins within the site. Uh, we're doing some tree clearing thanks to the DPW. Uh, they're going to be pouring, uh, the foundation probably in the next week or two for the tower, the new tower that will be, um, installed on the site. And, uh, then they'll install the, um, uh, start building steel and then install the tower. So, uh, it's going to move along pretty quickly once they, um, uh, do a few other things on the site, but right now, um, all things are on schedule and, and on budget. Did I miss anything?
On schedule, on budget. What's better than that?
Yeah. The only, the one, the one area that, uh, came up on the budget that we didn't anticipate, but there's enough grant funding so far to fund it, um, was the three-phase power that National Grid's bringing in, uh, is going to cost approximately $83,000. Um, so we'll fund that, um, we'll look to the state to fund that within the grant money, but, uh, that was something that was a surprise to us and we went back and forth with National Grid, but, um, National Grid doesn't do anything for free anymore, so.
Okay.
It's a significant project.
And thank you, Chief Hazel. Why don't we stay on this topic here? Let's, let's start with questions, um, around the, the center, the upgrade, because I think there might be a few questions on the regional dispatch center and then we can just move into general questions. So I know I haven't, but any other, any questions on the regional dispatch center? Ms. Stronach?
Um, my question is, um, when we talked about the regional center, we talked about the potential of three people. I know that we've had people come in, express interest, come out, come in, come out. Um, where are we at with a third, um, organization in the, I just want to be clear with, um, the residents that it is being built despite the fact that we currently only have two. It is being built for three, correct?
Yeah, it could, it's being built for two. Um, it has, uh, seven, uh, consoles, uh, right now being, um, uh, being fitted up. Um, it can go to nine, so we could take a third, maybe a fourth community depending on the size. Uh, but right now there are two and we haven't, um, we had different towns inquire, but nothing concrete at the moment. Is that accurate?
And I just have one other question, um, and this is kind of tied into your goals. When you're talking about the implementation of the policies and the platforms, is that being tied into the work that is being done with the dispatch center or is that strictly, um, your firefighter staff?
Right now, it's going to be between Draken Fire and Tewksbury Fire to get our staffs up and running.
Okay.
And eventually those policies will be conveyed to the dispatch. We're both going to have to change a little bit to make it work, um, which is not a bad thing. We're very similar departments, very similar communities. So not putting our dispatches in a position to have to make a decision on, well, Tewksbury does it this way, Draken does it that way. So that's why we're doing this now, we're doing it ahead of time to get our members, uh, in line with that. Eventually those policies, uh, those procedures will be carried over into the, into the dispatch center, yes.
Okay.
And just on that note, one of the things that, um, in regard to policies and procedures, we, we do have funding to hire an executive director, which will take, make, which will play a big part in helping develop these policies and procedures. The public safety chiefs from both towns interviewed candidates already. They've narrowed the field down to two. Um, we're doing background checks on those individuals and myself and the town manager of Drakken and, um, Teresa Malanga from our human resource department will interview the two finalists and we'll end up picking one soon and they'll also work on those policies and procedures. And then we'll start the transitioning of staff and, and their benefits and their contracts and how we're going to do all that over the next, um, few months.
And that segues into my last point. I do want to make it clear that we are not going to be having any of our dispatches lose positions because of this center. I think that there's a misconception that people think that we're eliminating positions.
No, we have enough...
And we say this every time, but I think it's important to say.
No, I mean, we're going to, anybody that's interested, you know, people who want to work in the center, well, there are plenty of positions to, uh, to hire the current staff that we have and, and accommodate Draken also, plus more, we're going to need to go beyond that because some of Draken's a part-time. So, um, yes, no one's going to be losing their job unless it becomes an issue as we transition. But our intent is if people want to, uh, work there and, uh, willing to work there, we're going to transition them all.
Great. Thank you.
Very good. Mr. Brian Dick?
Uh, all my questions were answered on the dispatch center, so I don't know if that's what we're focused on right now.
Yeah, just, yeah.
Yeah, so pass.
Ms. Miller?
Um, thank you. Um, Mrs. Stronach asked a lot of those same questions I was interested in as well. Um, are, are there other regional dispatch center examples that you're, you guys are looking to, to, um, to kind of not reinvent the wheel necessarily, particularly when it comes to kind of negotiating the collective bargaining agreements?
Um, yeah, so it's, we're not going into too much detail on it. We haven't, uh, looked at what other, others have done. Some are part of sheriff's departments, others are, um, um, unique entities. We'll try to work within the, within the agreements that we have.
Sure.
And so again, not to, not just, we don't want to see people lose their jobs, we don't want to see people lose benefits.
Right.
So we're going to try to make it a very seamless transition for them.
Okay. That was one of my questions.
And we do have a very cooperative, um, efforts going on with the State 911. They've seen what works, they've seen what does not work, so we are receiving guidance from them and we are looking at all models. Um, we haven't necessarily nailed down everything yet because the director has a lot to do with that too, the director that we bring on. So we want to make sure that that person's empowered to be able to bring in his, uh, his skillset to this also.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Very good. Just on the dispatch center, short and sweet. Uh, we've seen the communication behind the scenes and we just want to let the residents know. And as far as the board, um, board of Suckman for Draken, it's maybe too early to, um, what's the saying, break the bread, you know, because we're just getting started. I know Mr. Montori's over-communicating, but there might be a time in the very near future where we do synchronize and make sure that everyone's up to speed, um, as far as the updates that you provided, um, you know, just food for thought, you know, as we move forward and make a little bit of progress. And the second thing is leave, it's already been said, but I want to emphasize it, leave no dispatcher behind. Um, I know that was the commitment. There are unsung heroes in Tewksbury and we want to make sure that that's, that's the case. And so it's very, um, refreshing news that we're actually going to, uh, increase the number, not decrease the number, because that was a big, big concern for our dispatches. Like I said, the unsung heroes. So with that being said, let's just open it up for general, um, questions for the chief. Ms. Stronach?
Um, I only have, um, I was grateful to see the, um, emergency management plan, um, being put forward and I know that that's a group effort and typically is done under the leadership of yourself and the police department, so, um, and you talked about the cross department, so I'm really excited to see that come to life. The, um, policy in implementation thing, um, I was going to ask, um, when you're talking about pushing that down, um, what basically do you mean by that when they're like, they're monitoring the site to see what the latest compliance is? Is that an upgrade to your system? Is that an alert to you that you then have to change a policy? So how does, what are the mechanisms there, um, that this program is going to bring as a resource?
So what they do, they're constantly monitoring at a federal, state and local level, uh, not local, like town by law type of ordinance type of setting, but, uh, in the laws and case law that comes down, they make you aware of it and then as far as, when I say push down, it basically just means that the information flows from, it just doesn't stay in one office. It comes down to the people that are actually going to be using it on the street. So it is an online system that people, all of our employees have, uh, computer access and email access.
Mm-hmm.
And it's done through that system to be able to make sure that we have current and relevant training on our procedures and on our policies to make sure that everybody is aware of where the game plan is and where they're supposed to be. And if somebody falls outside of that, there's, there's a mechanism there to, to make sure that they get the education they need to.
So like email alerts?
Email alerts, they come down through chain of command and then it gets, uh, through our training officer and the deputy, then it moves down from there into the shift captains.
And then, um, I just want to say that I know that the town manager limits you all to three goals and I thought it was very clever that you put the, um, dispatch center and the fire station in one goal, when I think that those are pretty two big tasks. And I just want to recognize that those are, while it appears to be one goal, it's a pretty heavy lift for those two items. And, um, I know that your, um, team is working really, really hard on both of those initiatives, so I want to say thank you to you and your staff. But, um, it just looks like a little one-line thing, but I think it's a lot more than that one little line.
I think we're all finding that out, uh, weekly and daily basis in some cases, so.
Very good. Mr. Brian Dick?
Just a couple of quick things for clarification for me. Um, so on that first goal, that, that's, uh, emergency management plan, we have one of that, those now, right?
We do.
And we, we're just constantly updating it and that's what we're doing. And that's great that it's at the top of the list and there's so many players in that and you pointed that out. So based on technology, procedures, state information, whatever, you're just updating that and then, so that's good that it's constantly being moved. Um, so I got that, just clarifying that. And then, um, the other thing is on the, the policy and training platform, what do we have now? Is it, is it part of the munis system or is that, no, that munis is just accounting, right?
No, each department has basically their own sets of policies and, and how they, uh, implement those policies.
So this is centralized, yeah.
It's not a concerted effort. Uh, the town policies get pushed down to the department heads and then disseminated from there as far as at the town level, uh, a lot of your HR type of policies, uh, your vehicle policies, things that affect everybody. But the individual departments pretty much are responsible for the platform of what they use of, um, in their systems, of getting the information down to their, to their members.
So this is more, this system is for fire and police and more or just?
It is definitely a, a fire, um, system. I think that we'll find as we get into it, there's going to be a lot of crossover in the, in the HR functions, that we can take that and move that into the town system on a formatting and a legal basis.
That's good.
There's, sometimes you write a policy and it can be outdated six months after you write it, like a social media policy that's always changing.
Right.
So, um, so things like that, I can see that migrating over.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, the police department does not have this, um, they certainly could go to that platform at some point.
Yeah, he said that, yeah. But it might help them at some point or help HR at some point or whatever, so it's good that it can spider out. I like that, like new technology. And then you, and then the last thing, you mentioned Draken doing the same thing. Is that a requirement for the system for, since we're going, doing the regional dispatch? No, it was just something that they're doing to make a good handshake with the town?
It's not, it's not just Draken, there are other communities around us that are doing it also. Um, I think what a lot of us found out, uh, with the... it also. I think what a lot of us found out with the, when the OSHA regs came down and how they affect fire departments, we already had it pretty much covered. We do probably 90% of what that OSHA regulation required. And a lot of it has to do with documentation of how you do it. So we already do most of that, but there were just other things that came down with that, that a lot of people were kind of caught off guard with as far as the responsibilities. And I will say the, the state has been very cooperative with the fire service in making it a workable system. And they're not coming in heavy-handed and looking to find issues and problems with departments and towns and just laying out fines and getting people in trouble like that and communities in trouble like that. So it's, it's been a very cooperative effort to date. And I don't see that really changing with the people that are in place right now.
Well, it's good that it's going to help the employer, the employee, instead of all different parties. So I like that. Communication is huge for me and for the town. So as all, everybody here tonight presenting, thank you very much. I know you're very busy, so I appreciate you giving us some time. So thanks, Mr. Jeremy.
Ms. Jane Miller?
Thank you. I can see that you have all kinds of time on your hands with this sort of light agenda we have before us. I, like Mr. Dick, I, I find that the policy, Lexipol is, is quite an asset. I don't know that much about it, so I was interested to hear about it. So thank you. I know that when OSHA requirements became adopted, it created this onerous need for documentation, but then there are also intersecting pieces that didn't align, like clipping into, you know, the top of a ladder. Maybe you wouldn't necessarily do that if you're going to go into building or whatever it is. So I know that we've talked about this in other, in other forums. So it's, it's good to see at the state level that they're trying to kind of figure out the alignments and where those intersections are, are happening. But this sort of a thing really helps a lot with the, the onerous part of the documentation and the policies and making sure everybody's trained appropriately and documented that part as well. So I know that's a lot of, of work. That's not what people think firefighters do necessarily, all but the documentation part of it. So it's, it's really good. I don't need to say too much more. When, when you say, one, one question I had about the regional communication center, you said March or February was completion. When is it operational? About same time or later?
It's probably going to be, it's, it's, it's going to be complete sometime in February. It's going to take us some time to make it fully operational. By the time we get staff in there and then any finalized equipment, making sure everything's running properly and then switching everything over. I'm not sure if we'll run our old system and the new system at the same time, just to make sure things are running. But it'll be, it'll be some time. There's no show how long. Chief may think more.
One of the big things that we're looking at, and we were proactive with the town manager, town managers in getting a budget modification, was to step up the IMC program, which is the software that we use for dispatching for CAD and for police and fire. Drake it is coming over into our system and that entails them doing training for all their offices, all their firefighters in that operating system. That isn't, that's a lot, but that's not the big component. The big component, component is the conversion of the data from Drake it's systems into the system. They only have a couple of code writers that do that and, and take their information and move it into the, into the IMC system. So that's where it can take up to a year for that to happen. So that right now is a real driver on where other municipalities are coming on board and other regional dispatch centers, where we get in the queue. So we were very fortunate to have a budget modification and step that up and make it a lot quicker. So we got in the queue that much faster before other regional centers. That worked to our benefit. Now we just have to go and follow through and make sure that we get that training, get them on board. We're not going to have an issue here in Tewksbury because we're already using the system. We've already done the first step in the migration over by changing how our reports are generated, you know, to make it unique to Tewksbury so that when other communities come in. And the good thing about that is if we do add a third or a fourth community down the road, they can just fold right into our system. And it's not going to affect anybody that's in operation now. So it's-
Yeah, just, just to piggyback on that, and when I mentioned we had $451,000 in construction money we were asking for in FY '20's grant, that's because we used $451,000 in a already approved construction grant and got approval from state 91 to buy the software to get Drake the conversion. For Drake, it started back in March of this past year. So we had a year ahead of time to do it. So if all that's, that's going to, as the chief said, depending on when that timing's finished, will depend on when we get the thing operational.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
Very good. So Chief Hazel, I'll just have one thing. It's kind of off script here. So I just want to get your gears going and kind of give you a homework assignment. It's around the ambulance service. I know I always say that word wrong ever since I've been two. And just because of the state hospital, senior living homes and the intersection, I give an example of South and Salem where we are going to have improvements in the very near future. But just to put some thought around it, and it's amazing, too, I was going to, usually during a meeting, we usually hear the service go back and forth. So just to really take a peek on it, I know you do keep a pulse on it, you know, do we have enough, do we have enough staffing? You know, sometimes we have one or two in service. So just to put a lot of thought around it, you know, if we need to increase, because believe it or not, we're going to be right around the corner for talking about budgets, working with Mr. Montori. So just to put some real thought around the numbers, you know, do we need to increase? Do we have the right levels? Because it's pretty amazing in town, it almost like, you know, those, those felt, those folks never stop. So do you kind of, are you keeping a pulse on that? And you think potentially we would need to expand on that, on that service?
We actually, in the past few months, we used funding from a state hospital grant that we got from our, to increase our response capability here in town. We did put a, a second full-time ambulance on during the daytime shifts. And it pretty much ran Monday through Friday. And that gave us some pretty good data to look at, to see what the response times were, what-
Thank you.
What the mutual aid was that was coming in, what the mutual aid was that was going out of town. We generally, we always have one dedicated ambulance and we have a second ambulance that runs out of the north fire station that gives us the availability of two ambulances, providing that we, you know, don't have a fire call or that engine is out. So we take the two EMT firefighters that are on that north station, ambulance, switch them all, engine, switch them over to an ambulance so that they can respond. So we generally have two ambulances that, that can run in, in town. On the day shifts is when we find pretty much the, the busy periods. And what we're finding is that a lot of the transfer services, that a lot of the facilities that we have here in town contract out with, they have delays. And when they have delays, sometimes they don't necessarily have the availability to wait, or the, or the customer doesn't have the ability to wait for transport ambulances, they wind up calling us. That's something that we have to kind of keep an eye on. That's not the business that we're in. We're an emergent business. And what we did do is we split the town into, into north and south. So basically, the, the south side of town was covered by an ambulance that was running out of the south side. And then the center side, the center of town in north was covered by the ambulances coming out of the center. It was very beneficial to the fact that we did not have a lot of mutual aid coming in, but we still had mutual aid going out. So it's, it's a, it's a balance there on. And it's not so much a money, does it make money? It's what, you know, what the system, what, what's the most effective use of the dollars that we have available to us. So we were able to, to do that. And we'll probably be starting that up again in the near future with that grant money. That grant money comes from the state, but it's a year by year appropriation. So we don't always know that we're going to get it. So Representative Robinson has been pretty upfront with letting us know and Representative Maselli before that, on when they, when the decisions are being made and whether there's any phone calls that need to be made to, to, to help support that and what it does for the community. So where I can't allocate that money to be spent until I know that the money is coming in. So that's where we, we kind of in the summer months and into September, we don't actively, I just heard on the news today that the state budget, they're going for another extension right now for budget preparation. So that decision could get delayed a little bit more.
Yeah, fair enough. And we're also, we talked about the state hospital, you know, we do get allocations to your point on the funding. I don't know the numbers, at 90K per year essentially?
Yes, it is.
Okay. I mean, where, where are you working with Mr. All our representatives and our state senator to get, you know, to try to see if we can get more money from the state hospital, because they're a good customer. I'll leave it at that. And typically for the ambulance service, it's almost like if we, if we try to break even, then, then, then we're ahead of the game with a slightly positive budget, almost like it's just a water or enterprise fund or sewer enterprise fund, correct? We're not in the money of making business, but we don't want to-
All the money goes into the general fund and, you know, it's, we've done the analysis before, probably. It's hard to tell if we're making money or not making money. It's, we're doing, we're doing, we're doing well. It's providing money to the general fund. Okay.
And it, it also provides for equipment and capital expenses. There's a lot that goes behind that, not just the employees, but the training that goes along with the equipment. And we're constantly expanding services, you know, within that service, where BLS service, but we've recently taken on EpiPens. There's an EpiPen shortage. So we were just recently trained in how to, what's called check and inject, which basically has reduced the cost for that particular cost of the service. But, you know, there's always something else. We're going to be expanding again to LPoral treatments very shortly for people with breathing issues, that we can do that at a BLS level. And we work in conjunction with Lowell General and Dr. Drake to bring those additional services that we can do within the community to our service here.
Okay. Very good. And just in closing, I said it once, I'll say it again, between yourself, you know, we have the best, Tewksbury's very lucky to have the best men and women in uniform. And we can't, we can't thank you enough. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Very good.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you, Chief.
Thanks, Chief.
Thanks, Chief.
All right. Next on the agenda is DPW, Mr. Brian Gilbert.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Brian Gilbert. I'm the director of Public Works. And we're here this evening to review our goals and objectives for this coming year. I want to start by saying that these goals and objectives are a continuation of last year's goals, but stepping them forward. But before I get into those, as you know, the DPW is a very diverse, has a very diverse and encompassing scope of work. We can be, we stretch from the highest tree in town to somewhere around 19 to 20 feet underground. So we have a lot of ground to cover. We touch the lives of every resident in town on a daily basis. So these goals do reflect initiatives that we have been working on. But before I get into those, I just want to touch on some that drove through, some that we will be taking on in the coming year that I'm not going to be presenting as the three goals. We're going to be developing a resident online portal for the work order submissions. We do have a work order system now. We're just going to be, make that public facing so that they can directly submit requests to us. We'll be improving our information sharing and updating the website architecture and information to make it easier to find information on our website. With regard to snow and ice, where we have reviewed and will be reposting the residence guide to snow and ice, we'll be creating an informational trifold type of document we shared with the residents and we've talked about that before. We will refine our liquid pretreatment chemical applications, which we started this past year. The use of wing plows, we haven't used them in the past. We have three currently that, this will be the first year we use those. And we'll be focusing on sidewalk clearing snow. Within the highway division, we were, we were lucky enough to get some additional funding for pavement repair. So we'll be looking at repairing large areas of pavement failures and trenches. The focus is going to be first on Little Road and Pleasant Street, those long stretches of pothole and the pothole and the pothole. Forestry, the end of August, we'll be, we'll be receiving stump grinders. So we'll be grinding stumps and grinding stumps and grinding more stumps. We also, in the forestry division, will be doing a hazard tree assessment. We did this back in 2014, 2015, and we'll be doing that again this year. And water is, we need to begin meter replacement program up again. There was a number of meters where we, they had been within the last, or a couple of years prior to the major swap out, had been replaced. These meters now are upwards of more than 10 years old. So we need to start to replace those, as well as the water main replacement program. And also in water is modernizing the cross connection program. In engineering, there's a, a number of projects that they're going to be undertaking. But one that gets lost is, we did, we awarded a grant from DEP to, I wouldn't say develop because we already have a layer of our water distribution system. But they'll be, we'll be working with an engineering firm type bond to upgrade that and to map out our water distribution system. So there's a few things that we'll be doing that aren't necessarily goals. So to get on to those, I'm going to ask Kevin to begin with the first, which is stormwater program.
Thank you, Kevin. Thank you.
So as Brian said, you know, the first goal that we have the DPW is establishing, dedicated funding source for the stormwater management program in town, separate from the general fund as well as chapter 90, which we rely on heavily for the program currently. One thing we have to do is determine the level of funding necessary for the program. We have the EPA stormwater management program, their permit to comply with, which has a cost associated with it. Currently, we're in the second year of that permit. It's a five-year permit, you know, and it has six minimum control measures. And with each control measure, there's an associated cost for the town to comply with that. One of the things I've provided you with is kind of a summary of how we currently fund our projects in town. It's through state aid, through chapter 90. If you turn to the first page-
Can you have an extra handout for the audience?
Of course. So the, the first page shows a breakdown of what the town has spent state aid funding on since 1996. And as you can see, the, the bulk of its roadwork. There's some engineering, some drainage projects, equipment in facilities and then easements and other non-participating projects. Then when you look from 2010 to 2018, still, the town is spending a significant amount of funding on roadway projects. If you turn to the second page, you can see from 2010 to 2014, even more of the money from state aid was spent on roadway projects. A lot of that was associated with the roadway resurfacing that was done as part of the sewer projects. And then once that sewer project ended, you start to look at what the money has been spent on in the last four to five years. And the amount of money we spent on roadway resurfacing through state aid is significantly cut. You can see that drainage, engineering and equipment and facilities take up more and more of the state aid funding. And, you know, what we're seeing is an aging infrastructure, you know. Stormwater management and the drainage system that we have in town is something that was installed, you know, over the last several decades. And it was done with materials that are reaching the end of their useful life cycle. So we need to start making investments into that system as well as ensure that we're complying with EPA's permit. as well as ensure that we're complying with EPA's permit. And in order to do that, we need to find a funding source, you know, to support that program. You know, the second thing we need to do is educate the community on the necessity of this program and the necessity of this funding. You know, people turn on their water, they, you know, put things down the drain, flush the toilets, and they get a bill. They see the correlation between what they're using for water and sewer and where their bills come from and where their money goes. A lot of times, people don't see the benefit of stormwater and a stormwater program and a drainage and stormwater management system in the town. We, at the DPW, you know, we get a lot of resident phone calls bringing problems to our attention, you know, whether it's potholes, whether it's trees. And one of the things we receive a lot of phone calls on are areas in the town that are flooded, because the town has a lot of areas without an adequate stormwater management system. And that's one thing that we need to look at improving, and we need the funding to support that. In order to move forward with, you know, a stormwater enterprise fund, or we need to draft some sort of bylaw and bring that to town meeting. And coupled with that, we need to draft rules and regulations for that enterprise and how that's going to function and, you know, to make sure that it's fair and equitable for all the residents in town. Again, we need to bring that to town meeting, have a town meeting vote on that, hopefully adopt that bylaw to establish that dedicated funding source for the stormwater program. And then, the last piece of that would be to implement that stormwater fund and to start chipping away at the projects that need to be done in town. You know, Pinnacle Street is a great example of a drainage pipe that, you know, is beyond its useful life, and as a result, that road had to be closed. There are many other projects and many other pieces of infrastructure like that that are below grade that, you know, people don't see on a daily basis and don't see the, you know, the need and see where that money is going, you know, until things like Pinnacle Street happen. You know, unfortunately, we have to deal with that. So, that kind of rounds out the stormwater goal that we have, the funding source. Turn it over to Mr. Gilbert.
Our second goal is to initiate design of the improvements for the DPW facility. April 1st of 2017, the voters went to the polls to vote on an override initiative to renovate and expand the DPW facility. The initiative lost as presented to the voters, but the issue is still there. As part of last year's goal, we reevaluate the priorities of the renovation to scale back that project. Although we feel all the elements of the project's initial program were critical, we refocused our attention on the essential ones. So, for this year, we would like to finalize that, the DPW building improvement project scope, and determine a preliminary budget for it. And then, request of 2019 Fall Town Meeting, request a design and OPM costs. Then procure architectural and OPM services to begin the design process for the identified improvements. We came away with two priorities of the original program. The first was to build a fleet, a new fleet garage with a wash bay. The garage would be laid out similar to that proposed, some minor changes to it. It would be a three double-depth drive-through bays and one single-depth bay. We would add the wash bay, which would be located at the end of the, one end of the building. It would have a manual wash-down pad on the outside so we could knock off the heavy materials, so we wouldn't be dragging those into the wash bay and causing problems with an automatic type of system. The office and staff accommodations would be in the front of the building. There would be room for storage and a mezzanine space above. The ceiling would be high enough to allow dump beds to be raised inside, so it would be a minimum of 30 feet. The benefits would be to address cold, space, safety concerns with the existing facility. It provides additional truck storage from the vacated four bays. And the addition of the wash bay would just be a benefit to all departments in town that The second priority that we had was modification to the existing facility. We need to address the building envelope, the roof, the windows, and the doors. We did look at, we had an engineering, architectural engineering firm come in and take a look at the building envelope, and we have an assessment of that. One of the proposals was to add insulation to the outside of the building and then case that with a metal-type casing on the outside walls. This would protect the existing block. It would insulate the building. It would give years to those walls and that structure. We also looked at installing overhead doors on the front of the building so that we have more of a drive-through type of arrangement. Right now, every truck is backed in, except the forestry vehicles. But in order to stack that barn, and I don't know if you remember the pitches from last year, all the trucks are very, very tight. So, this would allow more drive-in versus backing-in type of arrangement. It's just more efficient, and we can probably garage more equipment and more vehicles. We would also address in the existing facility, the issue of ADA, OSHA compliance, which would be health and safety concerns, such as locker room facilities, which the staff do not have there. And they do work around the clock and many times during the winter 30-hour shifts. So, that would be helpful. A cafeteria, which we don't have. And we would have to arrange it such that both highway and forestry and water and sewer would be able to have sharp space in their own storage facility. So, those are the two priorities. And that's what we'd be looking for at Fall Town Meeting for that design and OPM services. But I just have to also mention that there are different, additional improvement elements that should be considered, and we have to take a look at these a little closer. With the additional storage that we would get from the vacated fleet garage, we would not be able to store everything inside. We're still parking outside. So, cold storage is an issue. Some ideas have floated a Butler Building, adding an additional lean-to off the back of the new salt shed. We have a lean-to, I think it's like 75 feet long by 28 feet wide. We could, and that's on the side. We could do the same thing around the back. We could close that in. We could keep that open or a closed portion of it. So, we would want to take a look at that. Reevaluate or evaluate the condition of the old salt shed. Determine if the old salt shed structure is worth saving versus raising and constructing new. There are a number of, we've been putting a lot of money into the old salt shed. It's a lower roof. It, the cross members get hit when people are delivering salt. It's, some of the braces for the inner wall are cracked and rotted at the base. It might be worth just getting rid of it. But I want to take a look at that first, and I can't say that at this time, whether or not that's the case. Whether we raise it or whether or not we make improvements to it, one thing that should be incorporated into that is a brine, a salt brine operation, where we can make our own salt brine. Right now, we have it delivered. It's a salt brine mixed with organics or agricultural products. Typical one that's used is beet juice. And that beet juice allows the salt brine to stay on the road longer. It also has qualities that help drop the freezing, the temperature of the surface of the road. So, it has an added benefit. We have taken, Kevin and I have been out, some of the guys have been out to take a look at some of these operations, what other towns are doing. Marlborough has a great facility. But as Marlborough did, they started with just the salt brine maker. They have gone to a production kind of a thing. They have three, what, 2,000 gallon tanks down there, and they're really into it. I would suggest we just get started and learn as we go. But we need a facility in order to do that. So, we'd be looking at incorporating it somehow here. And then the last element would be, which is kind of a latecomer or a piece of it, is the site work and landscaping and paving. One thing that we would like to do is to take a look, and I've said this before, I think last year, remove, well, we surveyed the entire lot. We went from Whipple Road to Pond Street, from Pine Street, to and including the RECC lot. So, we've, we've surveyed the entire lot. We've mapped out wetlands on the site. And we think that there's room that we can actually enlarge our materials area, the storage area, bulk storage, and possibly take a look at a brush drop-off or something such as that. We haven't investigated it fully, but I think that there's an opportunity there to expand the DPW yard and have that kind of service for the residents. And paving, there's a lot of paving work to do as well. So, at this point, I guess, just to conclude, we're looking at doing this somewhat in a phased kind of operation. We would ask for the design and OPM money for both priorities, and that would be the fleet and the existing facility. We'd also take a look at some of those other elements, but get the money for both priorities and then construct in phases. And the first phase would be the fleet garage, because we wouldn't, couldn't, we don't have any swing space for fleet. We would have to build that first, vacate, and then do the DPW garage. I guess that kind of wraps it up for Goal Two. Goal Three. We did become an OSHA state. On February 1st of 2019, we've done a lot to train our staff, document our programs, and also make improvements and purchase physical plant, if you will, or, what do you call the trench box? Some of the things that we need to... Yeah, same kind of thing. So, it's not just training and doing paperwork. It's also ensuring that the physical plant and the work zone that the guys are working in is safe. So, we did a lot there. We, we trained this year in a number of subject matter, trench safety, work zone safety, hazard communication, confined space. We took advantage of the police trainings and CPR and first aid, stop the bleed and avoid deny and defend. So, to, and this is all staff. And typically, what we have to do is we break our staff up into two groups. First group will go, the others doing whatever they need to do. And then, we have to reschedule for the second group to come in. But we have, this year, we're looking at electrical hazard awareness, emergency action plan, which is really fire prevention and how do you get out of the building if you had to vacate, fire extinguisher training. So, that's kind of lumped together. Then, we have slips, trips, and falls, and ladder safety, power tools and equipment, machine guarding, and lockout-tagout is another group. And then, chainsaw safety, limbing and bucking. And then, the last one would be bloodborne, bloodborne pathogens that we would want to train, train in. We do have programs that have been developed for each of these. We have a safety committee. It's represented by all the divisions. We take each one of the standard operating procedures that have been developed. We review that together. We all come together and agree on it, and then we train. So, that's pretty much the process that we used in the past year. And we'll continue that in the coming year. I guess that would conclude my presentation.
Very good. I'm going to open up the board. Mr. Stronach.
I'm going to defer to the other end of the table, because I feel like we're so far away.
No, that is, I'm only only here so the folks can see the thing, but that is delegation. Chris Jane Miller.
Thank you very much. Like your predecessor, speaking for us this evening, you can see that you have a lot of time on your hands.
Yeah.
Nothing going on in your department at all.
No.
No, not even a little bit. No, it's really impressive. I'm glad to see both of you here this evening. I think that your information on the stormwater fee that you're going to start pursuing is going to be a challenging sell in this community. A lot of communities have this across the country and in Massachusetts, so it's nothing new. It's just new to Tokesburg. So, there'll be a lot of work looking at that. And stormwater is a big deal, and it costs a lot of money. So, it'll be interesting to see your sample fee structure and so forth. I've been looking at that. I'm very excited to hear about the DPW facility. I voted in favor of that project. I was disappointed when it didn't pass. So, I thought that it's just super important for a community to take care of the assets that we always already have. We are responsible stewards of the resources that we have. I think that under your leadership, you have been. It's an aging facility and part of caring for our fleet and for our human resources in that department is what's essential. And I think you've identified that in your priorities to take care of your staff and the vehicle fleet that you have. I think it's interesting that you want to create a brine production facility or storage or create your own thing. I think that's really good.
Yes.
That's huge. We've seen in the past, I've done stories with you guys, when there's salt shortages and all kinds of other things that have happened. So, being able to have more control over the resources that we need to make our community safe is important, and I think that's exciting. And the wash bay, of course, is key in maintaining our vehicles. Have you done, and then moving on to your employee safety piece, I manage a safety committee in a different community, and so I know exactly what you're talking about. And I know all of those different trainings that you've done. And that is no small feat to identify with your staff and to go through and make sure everybody's trained and so forth. And I know you work very closely with Maya. You do a great job.
Yes, they have been.
Yeah, they're, they're really, really good. And I think, did you guys do hot works this year? I didn't hear hot works.
No, we haven't.
Do you have a hot work facility in your garage?
We don't do a lot of welding in shop. And we have in the past had a welder come in, and he basically puts up his screen.
Yeah, no, exactly. But that's not something you guys are doing too much actively right there. So, he wouldn't be doing hot works. Yeah, that makes sense to me. No, I think you guys do a tremendous amount. That's a, that's a long list. And it's hard to find, to carve out time and schedules to prioritize that. And do you guys do like the pre-winter, the pre-plowing thing that Maya comes in and does?
We have in the past, we have done that drivers' training, I forget what they call it, but right, plow drivers.
Yeah, it's that winter, snow and ice operations training.
Right.
Yeah, to, like what to eat, so you can stay awake for 30 hours, that kind of thing.
That's right.
Yeah, it's no... Yeah, it's no joke. So they do a great job on how to be, how to be safe. So I think you're doing an excellent job. I'm excited about all the other things that you mentioned, you know, working on the website. Yeah, just, I wrote everything down, your wing plows. I just, and the sidewalks, of course, I'm super excited about that and going forward with snow and ice operations there. So thank you very, very much for all you do and this very complete, detailed.
Thank you. Mr. Brian Dick.
Okay, trying to make quick, the, I guess, just a comment from my mom, but beet juice, I understand now why I was eating those as a kid and how important it is to the environment. No, anyway, trying to do, this stuff is dry, so I'm just trying to. It's very, it's very important, everybody out there. But it's tough being up here. No, anyway, DPW, so I guess the comment is anytime I hear communication, I hear make it easy for the public, you know, you've already been before us about snowplow and the pamphlet and the communication and talk about sidewalk clamming and all that stuff, that's awesome. So, you know, we talked about improvements, conditions of Whipple and Pleasant, you know, two major roads that are getting a lot of use right now with 38, right? So I understand all that. So I applaud all that communication, big, we're a big C on my chest for communication. I like that. I guess on the stormwater, you know, when you talk, that was a great presentation, and it's good to see, you know, I guess in 2010, 2014, we left, lost, we maybe lost our eye off the ball a little bit on drainage. Is that, is that the, I mean, I guess we're in this situation now because of state requirements, right? Our state, they want us to take control of this and things are getting, going that way. And, but, you know, you can see that there was more funding in 2014, 2018 on the stormwater drain, drainage program, right, versus, am I reading that correctly?
Right, yeah. So what that's showing is that, you know, in between 2010 and 2014, the state aid that we received from Mass DOT was put towards roadway resurfacing, which was, you know, really the intent of that, that funding. Although it can be used for engineering services and stormwater and things like that.
Okay, so it wasn't.
But then what we realized in between 2014, 2018 was that, you know, a lot of the infrastructure was starting to fail and we needed to get ahead of it and start, you know, designing cover replacements and, you know, look at flooding areas and design projects and implement projects to address those flooding areas. And we've put less money towards roadway resurfacing. You know, I think we need to get back to using that state aid funding for roadways and sidewalks and find another funding source.
For the drainage.
For the stormwater.
Gotcha.
Chapter 90 is finite.
It got thrown off by all the pinwheel colors and stuff.
Oh, okay. All right. Yeah, so there's 100% there, we're just using more to do stormwater and engineering and less and less to do the paving.
Gotcha.
So, you know, on any given year, we, you know, we may pave one to two miles worth of road. You know, we should be paving four times that to keep up with the number of lane lines we have.
Sounds good, yeah.
So it's just a matter of shifting.
So it's going to be a big challenge, right? And I know Mrs. Miller said it, I think it's educating the community. So I don't mind paying a fee as a resident, but I need to understand why I'm paying that fee because that's where we're going. We're going to, we're going to put a fee on to begin the enterprise fund to take care of the state requirement and, right, because it is a state requirement. They're driving.
Federal.
Federal requirement, I'm sorry, federal, state.
On funding.
Government.
And that's four.
But.
We will be coming back with a stormwater presentation.
Yeah, so I.
The meat of the.
Right, so I guess.
The enterprise one in August.
Yeah, so I appreciate that that's at the top of list because I know how important it is. I know our town manager's prepped us this board. It's just it's not, the residents don't understand it. So we got a huge goal, a huge challenge here. So I'll leave that as you're going to come back to us and talk about that.
Mr. Chair, I think, I mean, it's important to stay, you know, we're waiting for the final report to come in from our consultant, but the fee that we're looking at for the resident, for the residents, it's a flat fee ranging from $45 a year to $75 a year. And we hope to get that lower, but that's what we'll be looking at as a flat fee. It's not like water and sewer where it's based on consumption. And then for the businesses and multi-unit dwellings, it'll be based on the amount of square footage of impervious material, asphalt that they have in their complexes, so. But that's where, that's the range we're looking at right now. And we've talked internally and we'd like to get that down, obviously, lower than even the $45 a year, depending on what our needs are on an annual basis, so. But that's a flat fee per year.
And just to reiterate, it's not a Tewksbury thing, it's really a Massachusetts thing now. I mean, every time you pick up the paper and the news, this is spread across Commonwealth, so it's just not a Tewksbury thing.
Yeah, I mean, there are other communities, Chelmsford has adopted a fee, other communities around us have started adopting fees and have had them for a long period of time. And, you know, we're looking to essentially cover the capital costs and some of the operating costs and allow us not to impact Chapter 90 or the general fund to do these things. But we're trying to limit it as much as we can.
So, so just trying to finish up, thank you, our town manager. I, I think it's great that we're looking at it. I think it's great that we're talking about it. I think it's great there's a plan and there's going to be a presentation, communication, all that stuff. So I know it's very, very important to the town. I guess the last thing is on the improve, the DPW facility. So it's kind of ironic that we're talking about, and I know the plan is to go before a town meeting in the fall, and I support this because I know you guys need it. I would support a brand-new facility instead of band-aiding it as, and I'm saying that word, not that you guys are talking about, but when you talk about using the existing facility, and I'm sure you've done this research about, you wanted a whole plan, a whole ball ax, and I, I think that's, I'd like to see that's where we go. And, you know, it's ironic when we talk about safety and we're talking about trying to use our existing facility that we know that's inadequate, you know, we're talking about beams that are cracked, truck deliveries that are hitting certain things. We're talking about, should we, should we do analysis on our salt shed, you know? It's like, I guess I'm, you know, I guess I relate it to maybe the old high school, how we put that Band-Aid addition on that didn't really sustain itself. And my concern with that, when we always talk about maintenance and residents are concerned about maintenance, I like, I like brand-new, and I know there's a cost behind that, but I don't, I don't mind paying that cost as a resident or a business owner if, if, if we're getting shiny new. So I guess there's a, your presentation on your second goal was, could have taken up the whole meeting. You know what I mean? Like, we could have got into that discussion. It's chunky. There's a lot of chunks in there. And when you're talking about safety and we don't have locker rooms, running beams or cafeterias, just protecting our assets, not just our trucks and things, but our human assets, our employees, our family members. I'd like to see, I just know, like, when we presented this to the town, there was three things in front of the town, and the town said, and I'm just not speaking directly to you, but the town said, no, was a little bit overwhelmed with maybe the fire, have doing the fire station, and they approved that. And I guess my thought would be, why not go back to the voters and say, hey, look at, let's educate them on all the great things you talked about tonight? Because I don't, I don't think that was done back then as much as it could have been, my opinion, and, or I was out of the loop. Because me personally focused on the fire, but I know how important the DPW is. So me sitting here as a selectman, I would, I understand the phased approach, the money savings, the cost on that, and I've talked to Tom Airdrill about this type of stuff and, but me as a resident, someone that cares about the town, the infrastructure, we have, we're getting a grand, brand-new fire station, we got a new school, and the DPW, I don't think the cost would be as big to the town. I know that there is a cost behind it, Mr. Chair, but I would rather like that type of approach. And I'm not trying to blow up.
No, no.
What you're, what we're trying to do, because I understand we're trying to phase it in and kind of squeeze it in and maybe take the elephant with a spoonful instead of a big scoop, ice cream scoop.
Yeah, just quickly, first of all, I'm not sure our approach is saving money because sometimes renovations of buildings like this are more costly, so. And to be honest with you, every time, and I'm sure Brian's going to say the same thing, every time I listen to Brian talk about what he would like to do or how we want, how we're going to approach the DPW facility, I'm shaking my head inside saying, why are we doing it like this? And I'm sure as he's presenting it, and I'm sure Kevin's saying the same thing, is why are we doing it like this? And we're doing it like this because funding is tight. So again, as we usually do after these meetings, the two of us will talk tomorrow, and I'm going to revisit what you just said, and maybe there's a way to do it with a combination of both, which is money we have and money we ask for through an override. I'm not sure, but we're going to sit down again tomorrow and, you know, we just, we're trying to get something.
Yeah.
And that's not always the best way to approach it.
I know what I'm trying to solve.
Yeah, no.
I just want to put that point up there because I don't, I know what you guys are doing, I know we're all trying to find the right happy spot, but this is important, this department and what we, what it services and to kind of, I felt it, how you're presenting it, Brian, you were, you weren't excited. I mean, you were excited, but you were, I felt pain.
How excited are you?
My heart hurt. It was the beet juice.
Yeah.
My heart hurt, and so anyway, I just wanted to make that comment.
Maybe they could eat at a table.
But no, like you were talking about, you said the two fit, the two important things, the garage, right, no-brainer, and then with the wash plant, we've talked about that. Mr. Crapman's always been very vocal on that, and then you, and then when you get into the Band-Aid approach, and I know it's an approach, the existing facility, we're looking at the roof, when you said roof, I went, hmm, you know, like. So anyway, and then you went additional, and I got six to seven bullets, additional that wouldn't be funded. So anyway, I'm just going to stop it at that. I took my time.
No, it's a point well taken.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thanks for presenting it.
Thank you, thank you.
Very good. Ms. Stronach.
So I actually am going to piggyback on some of what Mr. Dick has said, and I also, I'm going to stop on stormwater because I really want to focus on the DPW because what I, I did a lot of work when we were, put this in front of the voters a few years ago, and you forgot to mention the mechanic's bay. And the mechanic, I don't know if you include that as a garage, I feel like the garage was on the other side and that's where, and the, the possibility of somebody injuring themselves backing in one of those trucks in the garage when you were talking about it is a liability that could be an astronomical cost to this town, never mind the building itself. I mean, that is a workman's comp accident just waiting to happen. And when we toured that facility, walking around there is dangerous, never mind the things that you were talking about in terms of a lunchroom and a place where people can go to take a break and going up that, I don't even know if I would call those stairs. And I know that what you did was you took some materials that were left over from another project and kind of put lipstick on a pig to use a phrase that probably isn't very attractive, but that's what you did in some of those areas to just make it more welcoming for the public, never mind your employees.
Right, that's what she's talking about.
Yeah.
That's the lipstick. I know what you're talking about now, yes. The front office area, yes.
Okay, and so I agree with Mr. Dick because when you're talking about this, if we're going before a town meeting, what is the cost of, like, you're talking about this and I'm thinking to myself, how much are they talking about here?
Right, exactly.
And, and so I would also love to get the finance committee back engaged in this kind of conversation as well in terms of what it is that you've put forward for a goal and what the actual cost, because I don't know if this goal has, I mean, as I was talking to other departments, I'm like, how much is that? And they're all like, can give me a number. But I think if I say to you right now, what's the number for this, you're going to be like, I don't know, because you're still picking your priorities in terms of, I mean, you got the big two, but they're spread out within that facility itself. So I would like to see this re-initiated in terms of the goal, in terms of the facilities. We have been talking about a board, and this came up last year, and we keep saying about infrastructure. We can't ignore that the DPW is in the condition that it's in. And, you know, it's unfortunate that we're sitting on a board where unfortunately, some of our major capital assets have outused their useful life, but that's what happens. Things are built in, you know, in 1950, and then 50 years later, things have to be rebuilt again. I mean, so we, we can't, to me, just to your point, put that addition on like the high school and then 10 years later go, yeah, that didn't work, we, we got to do it again and go back and be wasteful with the money that we are going to put into a project. So I don't see it as brand-new, I see it as being inefficient. So that's all I'm going to say to that. And with regards to the stormwater in the Chapter 90, I've been on this board for a long time, as Mr. Dick pointed out just recently to me, and we have been talking about stormwater and this big, bad, scary, federal monster breathing down our back and how much this is going to cost us. And we basically kicked the can with Chapter 90 money at the expense of the roadways and the sidewalks. So I don't know what this plan is going to look like, but similar to the DPW, we just don't have a choice. And when I talk to residents and, you know, I don't want to pay more in taxes either, but I also get phone calls from people going, hey, how come this didn't happen? How come that didn't happen? How come my rubbish didn't get picked up? How come, you know, how come the sidewalks are made of concrete and they're cracking and kids are falling on their bikes? I mean, it, it all has a cost associated with it. In stormwater, from me, while it's a big expense, it's really about protecting our environment for our kids. This is not a nice-to-have. This is protecting our natural resources within our community. So we don't have a choice on that either. And we became an OSHA state, so we don't have a choice on that, and I applaud your efforts on trying to do all those things with Maya and cutting the costs to Mrs. Miller's point because we're not bringing in big, high-paid consultants to do all those things. And I just have to give you once again a gold star for sneaking in all your little individual goals. So I think it's important for the people that work for you to hear that what they do day to day is important. So I think it would be lost if you didn't do that. So I know I do that kind of tongue-in-cheek, but I think that your department, you use the sky to the ground, but it covers way more. And I always think of the DPW somewhat of like the stepchild of our four big departments that we deal with on a daily basis because I always feel like if there's someplace to cut, we cut you. And I think we have to stop paying more attention to you. And I wish Mark was here.
I do and I don't, but anyways. I mean that in a good way.
I have a whole hour on.
Ms. Stronach, are you good?
I'm done.
All right, short and sweet. Okay, I'll try to be short and sweet. I'm going to just challenge something Mr. Dick said. He said, Mr. Brian Gilbert was not jazzed or excited with this presentation. I beg to differ. I saw a smile with the wing plow and the stump grinders, so.
Fair enough.
And the only thing Ms. Stronach just said, for better or for worse, it seems like whether you're a city or a town, the DPW. you're a city or a town, the DPW always gets, what's it called, the short end of the stick, and I think that's sometimes no different in Tewksbury, so you recognize that fact. The only thing for a short-term approach, maybe, not to go in solution mode, but we talked about a regional dispatch center, and we know we have much work to do, that's going to be taking planning, specific planning and execution and potentially building, going in front of town, the town for approval, for better or for worse, but just maybe the regional approach, again, just an idea, maybe it's not something feasible, you know, Barica, Wilmington, wash plants as opposed to do it manual, so food for thought, I don't know, we could maybe pot with them in their term, because I just, you know, we were talking about regional tonight and say, hey, maybe that's a solution, because I know Barica's right there, and Wilmington, you know, very close to us, so. And I do like the concept of a potential, believe it or not, a brush drop off. I know we do put the leaves out there, we just make a simple call, and we have certain days, but I cannot tell you how many calls we get from residents because it went rains or it gets close to snowing. All around town, you can drive and you see the bags of leaves, it's kind of a mess, so I love the concept of throwing in your trunk or your truck and getting rid of those leaves, because it has, you know, other towns do it, other communities, maybe for a small fee, but I love that concept, because, you know, it's maybe seems a little thing, but it's a big thing to residents, because, so I just want to call that out. So that's really all I had, the board covered everything else, so.
Just, Mr. Chairman, before we, before DPW goes, so I think, based on listening tonight, my thinking, what I heard from the board members, we're going to come back in August and present the stormwater, on the stormwater report that we get, and we'll discuss what we have for a recommendation for a fee and for stormwater utility at that meeting. Also at that meeting, because I know the agenda doesn't, is going to be, there's not that, right now, there's not that much on there, if anything, we're going to come back and we're going to regroup on the facility, and we'll tell you our thoughts based on the feedback tonight and the enthusiasm that both Brian and myself have for what was presented. And we're going to rethink it starting tomorrow, and we'll present an update at that meeting, okay?
Great.
And if it means we have to wait until May and do this and bring it back and say, we want to do it, this is the way we should do it, and see what the town says, we're going to do it that way. Okay, we're just, we're not going to, we're going to, for lack of better way of saying it, we're going to do it right.
I'm excited.
You're excited, see?
Excited. Ms. Miller?
Just a quick question, were you planning on funding the renovations, as it were, inside the levy limit? Is that the intention?
That was, that was the hope, but, and maybe it's a combination of both.
Well, yeah, I think it's, I still, I think there's a lot of there, there, I think it's still possible, even looking at a new facility.
Yeah.
I do, so I think this, I definitely think it's a go.
Yeah, so that's what I want to do, I want to, I want to see what we're really looking at, and, you know, the next couple of weeks, we'll have a better idea of final state revenue and other things, and I'll be able to put, I'll be able to put a bigger picture together than what we're talking about right now. And it'd be nice if we can do it within the levy, and if we can build new within the levy, that'd be great, that'd be our first auction, and we'll go from there. But that is the intent.
No, thank you.
Well, I was just going to say, thank you very much for your support, from myself and Kevin and all of our staff, thank you.
Okay, you're not just done, just said, Mr. Montori, did you want to cover something as well with the?
Yeah, well, before they go, you want to cover the Mill Street Bridge Order of Taking Easements, that's since they have?
Sure, yes, please.
Want to just provide a general update? I know we have it, matter of fact, just for the residents, on a new business, we want to talk about the Mill Street Bridge Order of Taking Easements.
Yes, so Mass DOT undertook a tip project to do some renovations to the Mill Street Bridge. As part of that, because it's a town road, the town is responsible to secure the easements associated with that project, which included temporary and permanent easements on four parcels, which abut the Shawshank River on both the north and south side of sides of Mill Street. We had one resident who donated the easement to the town, and then we had to compensate three other property owners for those easements. The temporary easements will be for a three-year period from the execution of the Order of Taking and recording at the Registry of Deeds, and then obviously the permanent easements will run in perpetuity with those properties. I've been in contact with all of the residents out there on multiple occasions, you know, per the eminent domain requirements through federal land acquisition, you know, we've kept diaries of those contact points, you know, along the, throughout the entire process. And now we're at the point where we're going to ask the selectmen to vote on the Order of Taking, that'll go to Mass DOT, and then they plan to advertise late at this month or possibly the beginning of August for that project.
And fairness, so the residents, you know, anytime a resident comes in there, we're going to let the residents grab the mic and talk through any issue. Did you, I know a couple of residents grabbed you prior to this, any concerns, any issues?
Nope, so Mr. Collins had reached out to me earlier regarding the easement, and his concern was that the easement on his property would then make his lot non-conforming. I've conferred with town council, town council has provided me with an opinion letter after reviewing the zoning bylaws stating that, and I don't have the language in front of me, I apologize, but it's that the creation of an easement will not therefore create a nonconformance of the lot.
Can we, okay, is that something that we could get in writing or potentially a letter, you know?
Yes.
If you gentlemen hit the lottery, it happens, you know, in the years that something happens, I'd like to get that in a form of a letter, I think that's fair to Mr. Joseph Collins.
Yes, I forwarded the letter to Mr. Collins and Mr. Clark, who was also here.
Okay, very good.
But I can also forward it to Mr. Montori.
So he's covered, he's comfortable?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Any questions from the board?
Just the public's information, I just think it would be good to let people know that, because there is a cost associated with this, and we're talking about it, and we're like, oh, but there was about a $37,000 cost associated with the town for us to take the easement. I mean, we need to take it, and I'm not saying that people should, and I'm grateful to the owner that donated it, and I would think that we should send a letter, Mr. Chairman, thanking him for that donation.
Great idea. Ms. Montori, is that possible?
Mm-hmm.
Awesome, thank you very much. Good call, Ms. Ronek. All right, any other questions from the board? If there's no questions, what is the pleasure of the board?
I will make a motion to approve the Order of Taking to be signed and notarized as presented, and then I also wanted to note that it will go to the October town meeting for final authority.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Thank you, gentlemen, very much. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, have a great night, thank you so much.
And I think, Mr. Montori, I think that concludes our goals and objectives for this meeting.
I'm going to run through a few departments quickly myself.
Okay.
Okay. If we can just talk about the finance departments, I just wanted to run through, they gave me their goals and objectives, and I just wanted to just let the board know what they are, just to keep you up to date on them. From the assessor's standpoint, the chief assessor, Joanne Foley, her goals that she's sent to me were to one, modify online website and systems to allow people who are looking for a butters list to enter their request onto the website, pay a fee, and then that would be generated back electronically. Right now, everything's done by coming into the office, and I know whether it's someone that is for the planning board, zoning board, conservation, this will be a big help to, to them to do that, and we talked about that at a previous meeting with the board, do a more online for the residents. The second one is an interesting one, it's amending our vision camera system to adjust all parcels that have excess of an acre of land in the first line to meet better, achieve better standard practices. Right now, when they, the old parcels, when they're rented into the system, there are two lines into the, to the software. The first line rounds to an acre, the second line rounds to .01 acres, it never caught in between an acre and a .0 acre. So on the old parcels, what people were doing and was done here, they would take the first line and manually just put in the 43, you know, the one point less than 0.1 acre. So Mass DOR said, no, you can't do that, go back and put in the exact acre, put the acreage in the first line, and even if it rounds to .01, put it into the second line. So one of the, one of Joanne's goals next year is to go back over those old parcels and correct that manual input of the acreage.
Oh my gosh.
And it captures, so what it does is, if you have a piece of property that's less than that .01 acre, it won't capture, it's going to round you up by that, it's about 400, 400 square feet. And then lastly, she wants to create a calendar of cyclical inspections for condominium complexes. Because of the number condominium complexes that have been built over the years, we've never put together a calendar of inspections, and by, you know, the DOR requires that all properties are inspected once every 10 years, and condos were never put on an inspection, a cyclical calendar, unlike the single-family homes. So this year, all of them came due, or many of them came due. So what she'd like to do over the next few years is get them on a more schedule, manageable schedule, instead of having them all come up at once. So those were the assessor's goals. The, next is the town accountant, and the town accountant, Pamela Alfano, has taken over responsibilities from Ron Florino, who retired, and obviously her goal every year is closing out FY19 and opening up FY20 in Munus, which so far has gone smoothly. Submit all the state reporting on the same timetable as her predecessors. Again, because she's new, she wants to make sure she maintains those aggressive timetables, gets information into the state, get our free cash back in August and ready for town meeting. One thing that's something we've wanted to do over the past few years is to create a per diem meals policy for our department's staff and department heads who go to conferences. We really never had anything in writing, we tell people what they are allowed to spend on meals when they go to conferences, but we want to get something in writing, and she's worked on that and providing a draft that we'll start to look at and implement, so it's consistent across the board. And then finally, the finance committee has a budget line item transfer policies, policy that they work within, that up to $5,000 can be transferred from one line item to another, into another line item, and then no more than $10,000 can be transferred into a particular line item for a specific purpose. And there's some confusion in parts of the policy, and Pam wants to update that policy with the finance committee to, for better clarity, and maybe even update it if they want to look at the thresholds that they have, so that's something that she wants to do in the upcoming year. And then the treasurer-collector, she'd like to look at vendors to come in and scan the cashbook logs that she has that were required to keep forever. Right now, they're all paper copies and bound, and we are running out of space to house them, so she'd like to get those scanned, and we're allowed to keep those electronically now. And then second, to start cross-training staff, because we are expecting the retirement of our assistant treasurer-collector, who has a great deal of knowledge, we want to start cross-training the staff and maybe see if there's someone within that who could take the position, or at least start cross-training staff in preparation of that retirement. So that's finance. The other one is, I want to run through is the IT department, Jamie Bent. His goals for the upcoming year is to start a process to start replacing town computers for staff on a five-year replacement plan. It'll eliminate costly breakdowns and provide staff with updated equipment on a proactive schedule. That's funded within his budget, and we'll continue to fund that on an annual basis to start replacing computers on a more frequent basis, instead of waiting a longer period, as we know they get outdated fast. He also wants to research and implement off-site backups for the town server. Right now, we don't have a real good backup plan, the hope was to either find a more secure, cost-effective and secure solution to what he's doing right now, whether it's putting a backup in the new fire station when it's built, the new RECC when it's built, working with Amazon on a cloud system for backups, but it's all part of a disaster, disaster recovery plan he wants to put in place, because a disaster recovery plan is one of the items our audit firm mentions every year that we need to have written, and he's been working on that. And then finally, he wants to update the website for IT department, if you go on the website, it's really a basic website, he wants to add more content and solutions for people who work in the town and information on what the department does. And then finally, is facilities and grounds, Vinnie Bommel, who is the manager for facilities and grounds, his goals for the upcoming year is to complete the field lighting project at Livingston and for the East Street Little League fields, which we'll be working on shortly. But for those of you who go down to Livingston, the lights will be in for Memorial, and they'll be turned over soon from the old lights, and they're working on the, they've converted the lights at the basketball and tennis courts to LED, and they'll be working on State Field. He also wants to begin the planning of improvements to the tennis courts, basketball courts, and skateboard park down there, he wants to repaint all the surfaces, and he wants to start planning for that and seek funding in FY21 to do that, but he wants to start the planning process. It's amazing how much those courts are used, and he wants to add to the skateboard park for the, for the users down there. And then finally, he wants, in the fall, he's going to shut down Orbden's and Antonelli Fields, and he's going to rebuild infield and both of those fields, and that's one of his goals for the upcoming year.
Where are those fields?
Those are the big fields down at Livingston.
Okay.
And that is it, those are all the goals.
Questions from the board?
Those are great.
Those are great, and everyone's out of energy. No, very good, thank you very much. And please thank the department's heads and all involved.
Thank you.
All righty, so, I know this has kind of been a little bit long, do you want to take a break, or do you want to push through?
Push through.
Let's push through. So I do believe now we're at the point, we covered all scheduled items, so this, we're going to turn it over to residents, are there any residents that would like to speak at this time? Seeing none? Okay, we're going to move to new, new business, so we have a common vicula license and amusement license application for the New England Authentic East LLC DBA Papageno's and DeAngelo's at 553 Main Street, and the subsequent request, I know we're going to take them independently, is from 1900 Main Street. So it's my understanding, Mr. Montori, reading the new request, in a nutshell, is these businesses went, filed for bankruptcy of some sort, and essentially, these are the new, let's call them new owners, for lack of better words, so they're just trying to renew the.
Renew, under new ownership.
Very good, correct. And we saw all the paperwork as a board, so I don't know if there's any questions from the board, but I thought it was pretty self-explanatory. Any questions?
I just wanted to make a comment that I'm glad to see that somebody else took over these, and that we're not closing these in our community as some communities are. So with that, I'll make a motion to approve the common vicula and amusement application for New England Authentic Eat LLC DBA Papageno's and DeAngelo's at 253 Main Street.
Oh, that's actually.
I'm sorry, 553.
All right, very good. I have a motion, a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Next line, I think we kind of just changed from 553 Main Street to 1900 Main Street.
I will make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
I have a motion, I have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. All right, next is the parent whose host lost the most, it's sign request. Maybe, Mr. Montori, you just want to update us quickly on this one?
Yeah, so Maria Roggerio, Maria Roggerio has requested to locate these signs on town property. It's just to build awareness during the summer when we see most of this type of activity, different events going on in individuals' homes, just to make people aware what their liability is and part of the drug and alcohol awareness that we do in town. So she sent a letter in requesting the signs to be put on town property, and I just wanted to bring it to the board to see if we had any problems with it.
Yeah, this was new to me, I think it's good stuff. Any questions from the board? I know we have, you know, we had a chance to read what it's all about as far as the initiative, so essentially just helping, you know, just raising awareness to the youth, that's all in many different areas.
They said a quick question from Tommy, so is it, when you say town property, what's their goal, they must have said, like, is it a bulletin board?
No, it's just those small signs.
What do you mean, is it on telephone poles, is it, are they posting?
No, they'll be stuck, they'll be in the ground.
Oh, in the ground?
Political.
Yeah.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Is there any, is there any plan to use tillable light boards or some of the electronic signs that we own at the high school?
We haven't, we haven't, we could use the one at the high school. Our electronic signs are probably going to be out on our projects, so we'll be able to use those. But the new sign board, electronic sign board will be going in this week across the way, and if that's up and running, we'll use that.
Okay, yeah, I think it's, I think it's worthwhile.
And we'll try to use some of the, some of the electronic signs that the planning board has approved have to provide so many hours of community or so much time of community use, so we'll see if we can reach out to them, too.
That's a great idea. Thank you.
And I think, I'm just asking, I think, I don't think I, was there a particular date in there, Mr. Montori, as to when?
It'd be for the summer.
Okay.
Yep, for the next couple of months.
All right, very good. I have no further questions. What's the pleasure of the board?
If you can...
Do you need to take action on this?
If you could just vote to support.
Motion to support. I made a motion to support.
Second.
A motion to support and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Very good. I think that brings us down to, we already covered a few of these items. I do believe that brings us down to, Mr. Montori?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. A few things. Senior town council invoice for June 2019 in the amount of $4,818.25, I would ask the board to approve.
I make that.
I have a motion by Ms. Miller and a second by Ms. Amy Stronach.
There you go.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous.
I have two invoices from town council, one for the period of June 1st, 2019, through June 15th, 2019, the other from June 16th through June 30th, 2019. The first is $1,912.50, and the other is $1,232.50, and I would recommend approval of both.
Mr. Chairman, so moved.
I have a motion. You have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous.
The next item on the, under my report would be to schedule the October 2019 special town meeting. Traditionally, it's the first Tuesday in October. I would ask the board to set the date of October 1st, Tuesday, October 1st, 2019 at 7:00 PM at the Tewksbury Memorial High School for special town meeting.
So moved, Mr. Montori, uh, Mr. Chairman.
I have a motion, you have a second?
I'll second that.
All those in favor? Aye, unanimous.
And now the town meeting data set, I'd ask the board to vote to open the special town meeting warrant, starting tomorrow, July 17th, and closing it on August 16th at 4:30 PM.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to open the October 1st, 2019 town meeting warrant, effective tomorrow morning, July 17th at 8:00 AM, and closing at 4:00 PM.
4:30.
4:30 on August 16th. Sorry, that was a bug.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous.
Thank you. And then finally, something I added to the agenda today. We're preparing a land sale of town-owned land that abudders to that land have requested, and some have requested for quite some time, to add to their property. The land sale that we are looking to move forward with is for approximately 10 parcels. They range in value from $100 to $3,100 in value. They range in acreage from .04 acres to .13 acres, the largest being 5,662 square feet. The land sale, again, is in accordance with the town bylaw, so we do not need to go to town meeting for approval for these lots. And we would follow the same procedure to determine the price for the, the minimum price, which would be the assessor's fair market value that they have on the land. We would add town council costs for legal work, recording fees, administrative costs, and the cost of advertising of the land, which we've done in the past, and people who are interested in buying the land are very happy to pay it because they would like to, again, take control of the parcel which abuts their land. We send the advertisement and the proposals, bid proposals, out to all of the abudders of the land, so everyone's notified, know they have right of, they have preference. And I'd like to move forward with these particular lots over the next few weeks, unless the board has any objection to that.
Oh, Ms. Stronach?
I have no objection. I just want people to know that the bylaw is going to require some of these to have town meeting approval and some of them not, and the differential is determined by the 5,000...
5,000 square feet.
Right. I just want people to know that, because I don't want them to say, how come this went on, this one didn't. So I just think it's important for people to realize that some of them require, but not all of these lots require town meeting approval.
Yeah, great, great call out. So you're looking at a form of a motion, the ones that have been approved by town meeting simply has to approve now so we can move forward?
Correct. Actually, I just will knock one off based on looking at something. So yes, nine lots will sell.
Yeah.
And they're all under 5,000 square feet. And again, they're all requested by the abudders, and the ones that are over 5,000 square feet and need town meeting approval will evaluate over the next 30 days and maybe bring those forward in October.
Chairman, I'll make a recommendation to approve the sale of the lots as presented by the town manager.
I have a motion, you have a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous.
And just, again, just for information, town meeting in the past had approved the sale of 97 Florence Street, which has a single-family home on it. They approved that a couple of years ago. In this past town meeting, they approved, they authorized the sale of 283 Pleasant Street. Florence Street will be sold for affordable housing, and Pleasant Street could be either or. We'll evaluate the proposals. We're going to move forward with the advertising for, request for proposals for those parcels, and when we get those in, I'll bring them to the board to evaluate on how they want to move forward with the sale, but we'll get those two going also.
And you're simply moving forward because those were authorized already by town?
Very good. And that is all I have, Mr. Chairman.
All right, very good. Thank you, per usual, Mr. Montori. So it brings us to board member reports. How about Mr. Brian Dick?
Yep, the only thing I have is, we, I'm going to book, schedule a meeting for the field subcommittee next week, so the 22nd, 23rd, 24th. So I'm just trying to coordinate all the members to get together. The building, the elementary building chairman has some information that we'd like to form the subcommittee on, and so that meeting will be scheduled at that time. That's all I have, one of those dates coming up.
Ms. Jane Miller?
Briefly, I had a meeting with some folks at NIMCOG last month, and we went over some, some stuff. And one of the, one of the things I talked to them about was adding a section of Main Street to the project on Route 38. So they're planning to do Colonial Drive to Old Boston Road, and I wanted them to do Colonial Drive to Victor Drive, so that there's sidewalks, and that that's a very dangerous section of road, and it connects to business and healthcare and also to the middle school. So I thought that was kind of a critical section to see if they can do, but there's a lot of engineering and design that goes into that. So we're still trying to get that. Their recommendation was to have a letter written by the board of selectmen and sent to DOT and so forth. So that's one thing I'll be doing. I have another meeting with NIMCOG tomorrow night to try and move this along a little bit, but I'll bring a letter forward to the board at a future meeting in August to sign, and then we'll submit that to NIMCOG and Mass DOT and anybody else we need to, to try and get that section of the road added to the project, or maybe as a follow-on the following year. Okay?
Awesome. Thank you very much. Ms. Stronach?
The local housing partnership was scheduled to meet tomorrow night. That meeting has been canceled, but I do want everyone to know that Chairman Nancy Reed and the assistant town manager have met with Mass Housing, and they're going to do some additional work based on some of the information tonight, as well as the other piece of property that they're looking at before, so we're just not meeting just to meet. So they have some things that they want to, so that meeting was canceled, and it was kind of last minute. The building committee meeting is, the elementary building committee meeting is this Thursday, July 18th at 6:00 PM. I will not be in attendance at that meeting, Mr. Montori, and I know that he'll be providing updates to the group. And the events committee is quite an enthusiastic committee. I really love the energy of that committee.
Always is.
So they are diligently planning the Sunday, September 29th Fall Festival with the street closure and additional rides. They have 11 food trucks, so we're going to have our own little mini food truck thing going on, and they've got a lot of really great surprises that are going to be new and invigorating, and they're staying off the football field so that we're maintaining that field a little bit better, so we're happy about that. So I just want to thank them for their work on that, and remind everybody to keep it on their schedule, September 29th.
Got it, September 29th. Okay. Super quick here, boards and committees, we wrapped up, just for the residents, we wrapped up all the interviews and appointments for all the boards and committees this go-around. That was perfect timing. All the committees are going to get going now, July 1st and on. So it was, what an incredible turnout by so many residents, both new residents and residents that have been in the community. So incredible turnout representing the boards and committees. So I want to thank even the board for the interviews and the appointments. I'm just looking forward to working with so many new folks and some of the folks that volunteer their time. So number two is, we're getting a lot of requests for springtime and summertime. We get bushes, weeds that grow up in vacant properties. So we talked about board, last night we had a meeting to talk about priorities of the town and, and goals and whatnot, but we are going to make a general bylaw for the October meeting, because enough is enough. We're going to send the property owners letters for cleanup. We are going to draft an article for the upcoming fall meeting to put some bylaws, general bylaws around there, so we can send letters and send fines accordingly, because, you know, we get calls every year from the same offenders. We recognize that. We're trying to do our best, but it's time to put something on paper. So I just wanted to update the community there, because we've been getting a lot of calls. And last but not least, big shout-out to Chief Sheehan. Chief Sheehan received an exemplary leadership award. So just short and sweet, on, on June 11, 2019, Tewksbury Chief of Police Sheehan received the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Department of Mental Health Law Enforcement Exemplary Leadership Award at the Ninth Annual Mental Health and Law Enforcement Conference. So I'm not going to read anymore, but I can say this is very, a very prestigious award. There was a beautiful article in the Lowell Sun about this, and just like Chief Sheehan always does, just like Bill Belichick, all he does is he give credit to his team. So that was pretty significant, so I wanted to call that out. So if he's watching, congratulations to Chief Sheehan. So that's all I had. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you very much. Thank you.